I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council held on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Critzer.
Here.
Can we just go down the line since we're all here? Thank you.
Councilmember Fields, here.
Council Vice President Forsyth, here.
Councilmember Salah Huthin, here.
Stuart, here.
Nueva Camina, here.
Anderson, here.
Great, thanks, everyone. The first item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. You may speak regarding Initiative 2117 during the public hearing portion of the agenda tonight, and all comments must pertain to city of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. And tonight, we have, it looks like, 12 people signed up. And I'll usually call first few so you know when you're coming up next. And then we have two online as well. So I will call your name in order. Alex Zimmerman, William King, Hank Myers, and then Amandine Dennis LaRocque. And Mr. Zimmerman, you're first, but you did not put down a topic, and you need to put down a topic of the city of Redmond business that you're going to be discussing tonight.
I'm not here. Repeat, please. Not here.
You need to put down a topic pertaining to the city of Redmond business in order to speak in front of the council tonight.
Only about Redmond business, hundred percent.
And so what is that topic, sir?
What?
What is the topic of Redmond business that you'll be discussing this evening?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, Mr. Zimmerman, this is...
But it's open between Bellevue and Redmond.
Mr. Zimmerman, you need to pertain to the city of Redmond business. And this is your warning today. If you, next time you show up and you don't, you do not put an item down, then you will not be allowed to speak, but I'll let you speak today.
No problem.
I have a few dozen trespasses. Don't worry. And prosecute me now, yeah. Four times. Okay. Zihail. My Dori Dem, Nazi Gestapo fascist junta with government antisemitism. I'm named Alex Zimmerman, and I want to speak about something that is very important to Redmond. Because Sound Transit 3, what is open between Bellevue and Redmond, is a six miles. So a few months ago, they opened, couple of months, they opened. You know what it means? So what's happened? What's happened to Redmond and what's happened to Bellevue? Yeah, sorry. Yeah. This train go every day, 24/7, something like this, totally empty. It's not only broken traffic, you know what it means? It's totally empty. Totally confuse me, you know what it means? Because we spent for Sound Transit 360 billion dollar now, us money. We pay for car. Yes, it's very interesting, you know what it means? So Board of Director, Sound Transit Board of Director and Mayor is part of this. Two weeks ago, give me another trespass when I speak only for 10 seconds. He stopped me, is this it? It's four trespasses he give me. She's involved in this business too. So my question right now to everybody, can I, you explain to me, why you scared when I come and talk? So Sound Transit 3 is a Ponzi scheme, and I talk on this for 10 year in every meeting. And this exactly right now, you can approve. So I'm right by 100 percentage, 99. So my question right now very simple. What is going on with you? Why you acting like a freaking, what is I call intellectual disability people? Hundred sixty billion dollars for nothing. Look what the traffic we have right now. Seattle Times, couple weeks ago, make a decision, we spend $1,000. Time are most doubled. What is government doing for us? Why you very quiet? Because when you quiet, and you quiet too. You know what it means? That's exactly what is, they can't doing this. This Nazi bandito, you know what it means? They use us. Use us? Hundred sixty billion dollars? You can buy city like Redmond for this money. Why we all so quiet? Can you explain to you why we so scared? Start in talking like Alex Zimmerman talking for last 20 year, 4,500 time. When you can wake up, stop and acting like a intellectual disabled, pardon, word idiot good. Thank you very much for your time.
Next is William King, then Hank Myers, and Amandine Dennis LaRocque, then Aparna, and I'm going to get your name right by the time you come up to say, to speak, Aparna. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bill King. I live and work from home in downtown Redmond, and I've been here for eight years. First, I'd like to thank the council for the investments it's made in trails and transit. I don't own a car. I get around by walking, biking, and transit. And the upcoming trails like RCC 3 and the bridge to Marymore Village will have an enormous positive impact on pedestrian bicyclist safety. The downtown link station located right on the Central Connector Trail will be absolutely transformative for me and my neighbors. Thank you, council, for supporting these projects. However, I'm here today to talk about a big missing element of our transportation network, which is physical protection for people outside of vehicles. Separated trails are great, but they don't go everywhere. And that means that most trips will start or end with a walk along a sidewalk next to vehicle traffic or for bicyclists on the street. I know the city is investing in improved signal infrastructure, and I think this is a good investment. But most of the close calls I experience in Redmond, the things that make me feel unsafe here, are not due to inadequate signaling, but due to drivers behaving recklessly, taking a turn too quickly without checking for pedestrians in the crosswalk, or even driving up onto the curb, or driving into or parking in the bike lane, forcing me to merge into vehicle traffic. These aren't problems unique to Redmond, but I think the fact that we call ourselves the bicycle capital of the Northwest means we should hold ourselves to a high standard. The reality today is that people traveling through Redmond without a car are taking on real physical risk. We don't have crumple zones. This risk would be significantly mitigated by installing infrastructure, like bollards and barriers that are proven effective overseas and are being rolled out now across many American cities, including Seattle. I was discouraged to read that hashtag on Cleveland Street, which has been the victim of four car crashes in the last year, was recently denied permitting for protective bollards. If we can't install protective infrastructure at a known dangerous corner of one of our most pedestrian-heavy streets, something's wrong. My ask of the council is that if there is a city policy which is acting as an obstacle to bollard permitting, that you investigate and address that policy. More broadly, I ask the council to fund the rollout of physical protection along any corridors with high rates of injury or close calls. Thank you, council, for your continued work toward building a safer city for everyone.
Next is Hank Myers, then Amandine Dennis LaRocque, then Aparna, I'm gonna get it, Mary Comstock, and then Ivor Frederikstad.
Let's talk homelessness. First, how many of you have taken part in the One Night Point in Time survey? The Supreme Court has handed you a new tool in the issue of homelessness, a tool I hope you will not use. There's a long list of failed solutions to homelessness, and we do know that arresting, or even worse, fining people for camping in our public spaces is failures. If we are going to find solutions to Redmond's homelessness issue, we need to look at our local problem and devise appropriate solutions. Don't look west for good ideas. Seattle and King County have created a huge and growing mess that is destroying parts of that city and county. Having failed on their own responsibilities, they seek to export their problems to us. We need better solutions, and over the years, Redmond has taken decisive steps to reduce the problem. Step one, understand the problem. Councilmember Stuart sent me a nice email in response to my comment that the point-in-time survey was useless. She told me it's a federal requirement. That does not mean it has to be your only source of data, particularly if it is useless. The reason I asked you earlier about participating in the point-in-time is because in my 12 years on the council, I participated in eight actual homeless counts and two point-in-time surveys. No great credit to me. Councilmembers such as David Carson and Pat Vachet didn't miss any. Redmond-based Hope Link organized and managed the one-night count, and out-of-pocket cost was for snacks and a hot breakfast that was provided by the Bellevue First Presbyterian Church. I suggested doing it twice a year, August and February. Human services staff, police, and fire were tremendous help in the past. Once we know the scope and nature of the problem, then we can create solutions to address the specific needs on a factual basis. We have a great opportunity here. Let's do this together. On a down note, though, I understand city is funding for the Foodbox program is ending. This would be a real setback for nearly 200 families in our area. In addition to city funds, private funds, charitable contributions, support, significant food security effort. Also, MCRC and the Essentials First regularly provide toiletries and other non-food items of value. The entire undertaking is a volunteer effort, something Redmond residents are famous for. The best way to end homelessness is to prevent it. What is more important, preventing homelessness for 200 families already here, or providing expensive housing for 100 people who may not even live in our area? I chided you for overspending on the community center budget. The rationale was the city had surplus funds. Now we know what there isn't enough surplus for. It's not too late to restore funding for the Foodbox program now. Thank you.
Next is Amandine Dennis LaRocque, and Aparna Varharajan, and then Mary Comstock, and then Ivor, Ivor Frederikstad.
Good evening, members of the council. I have already come here a couple of times to speak and listen to you. Today, as you may know, was the first day of school this year, my junior year of high school. So I definitely have better things to do than to come here and complain to a bunch of adults who won't listen. But here I am again. I know that you can hear me, but I don't know what I can say or do for you to listen to me. We won't give up. You have made the decision to go forward with the Plymouth project. You still have time to make things right. Even though I am not pleased with this project, you should go forward with it the right way. The right way means that you are doing your best for the safety and happiness of current Redmond residents and the residents of the new housing facility. This includes providing everything possible to take care of these new residents, like providing drug treatment. By just providing shelter, you are not solving the problem. You're just moving part of the problem from the street into a building. This doesn't promote safety for the new residents and the current residents. Drug use will continue by the new residents, and drugs will be even more prominent in the streets and in the and in the public view. Just last first day, I was in downtown park with my family to eat dinner. On our way to the car at the parking lot, we see a man smoking marijuana in a public space. My dad told him that there are families here and that smoking marijuana in public areas is illegal. The man responded by saying, "It's our planet." There is no law enforcement for illegal drug usage in public areas now. People think that they can do anything. I can't imagine how the streets will look like after potential drug addicts that won't be treated will stay in Redmond. I care about Redmond. It's the place I go to school in, the place where my family is, the place where my friends are. It's a place with so many memories. I want Redmond to stay that place. I want it to continue to be a safe, happy, and family-friendly place. When I think about Redmond, I want something positive to come to mind, and I'm sure that you do too. What image do you want people to have of Redmond? It's all up to you. You are in charge. You've heard me as well as many other residents. You know what's going on in other Plymouth facilities, like in Bellevue or Seattle. So please, think about your community and ensure that drug use laws are strictly enforced and that any resident of the new facility gets proper treatment. Thank you.
Next is Aparna Varharajan. I was close. I was close. And then Mary Comstock, Ivor Frederikstad, and then David Morton.
Good evening, council. I'm here to talk about the water supply plan that is in front of you later today, which the Planning Commission has approved and up for recommendation. I am speaking for myself and not on behalf of the commission. I want to be very clear about that. I have written a letter, which is part of your packet today. I request you to kindly read it. In short, I have a significant concern. It's detailed in the letter, but let me just talk about it a bit more. The water supply plan is very detailed. It makes these assumptions that we have adequate water, which is coming from the Cascade Water Alliance. Unfortunately, the Cascade Water Alliance has not released its plan, and that plan is overdue. It is expected to be released next year. I request the council to kindly read the introduction to the report as well as the letter, but my request to you would be to recommend a technical review of the water supply plan after the Cascade Water Alliance releases its report next year. This would make sure that our plan aligns with the new assumptions of the and the new plan, and that we have not dropped the ball on something as important as water in the long run. Too critical an issue, all I'm asking is for another looksee on the report next year. So, thank you for your consideration. Good evening.
Next is Mary Comstock, then Ivor Frederikstad, then David Morton, then Radka Chapin, then Aspen Richter.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Mary Comstock, and I'm the regional manager for your Redmond Library of the King County Library System. And tonight, I'm very excited to be here to tell you about things that are happening at the Redmond Library, and most particularly, those things that are happening in partnership with the city of Redmond. Since January of 2024 up until August, we have had almost 240,000 library visits at the Redmond Library. We've had almost 48,000 active borrowers. That means folks that are checking out at the library right across the parking lot. We've had 3,700 new patrons. That means new cards being issued, and the year's not over yet. We've also had 650,000 checkouts at the library, again, right across the parking lot. We've had almost 390,000 digital checkouts. That would be our ebooks, our e-audio, magazine, music, and more. And the system as a whole has had about 1,035,000 checkouts. So you can see, we're a pretty significant percentage of that. In addition, we have 83 public computers, and we've done 25,000 computer sessions at the library. So more than that, we have many programs happening at the library, and some of them in partnership with this city. I wanted to call out a few folks that we work with pretty actively. That includes Lorene Hamilton, the Parks and Rec Director, Zach Covenor, the Deputy Parks Director, Jan Harrison, the DEI Program Advisor, Erica Chua, the Recreation Manager, and then Nicole McDonald, Laurel Williams, and Alex Clark of the Special Events Staff. We are thrilled to work with them. They are fantastic representatives of of this city, and it is a joy to be able to partner. In addition, Councilmember Stuart also tables at the library across the street, across the parking lot, and we're thrilled to have her there. This fall, we have a couple of program series coming up. The Community Court and Resource Center will continue. Outdoor Storytimes will continue up at Farrell McWorder. You probably noticed, we were doing outdoor storytime out on the great lawn as well this summer, very well attended. We have some sustainable living programs coming up, and we're going to be doing some in-library tabling around recycling, speaking to our shared value of environmental and economic sustainability here in the city. Last but not least, we have Welcoming Week coming up September 13th through the 22nd. We're going to be doing a Geocache Adventure Lab scavenger hunt out here, so folks can realize that they are welcome on the municipal campus and discover all that the municipal campus has to offer. That's going to be happening from the 13th through the 22nd. We're going to be launching that on the 13th at the library. All are welcome. It's at 4:00 PM. Then we have a World Cafe, where we can share coffee and stories. And that is on September the 22nd. And then we'll be hosting World Music and Dance also on September 22nd. So I want to end with saying, please come, visit your library. If you need something from us, call. We're always there unless we're closed, and then we're open 24/7 online. So thank you, council. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. Next, we have Ivor Frederikstad, then David Morton, then Radka Chapin, then Aspen Richter.
Hello, council. My name's Ivor Frederikstad, and I'm before you today with an urgent plea from our neighbors across the bridge. After three decades of serving pretentious European cinema and eccentric adult tomographies to our region, Seattle's Scarecrow Video Rental Enterprise is at risk of closure. Although this is a Seattle business, I believe my beloved Redmond is uniquely situated to both preserving this landmark institution and revitalizing our own downtown. But first, let me explain how this are so dear to me personally. Over two years ago, I came before this very council proposing a matrix of troll statues across our region. Although my hopes were low, you guys really came through. Today, the Puget Sound region are home to five fantastic statues from Isaguat to Vashon Island. While I was insulted you chose some Danish artist to bring my Norwegian vision to life, your work has brought me much fame and celebrity. But more importantly, it brought me love. Shortly after the final statue was completed, I walked into the Soul Food Coffee House and Fair Trade Emporium on 158. I planned to get the Dirty Hippie Help Milk Latte, my favorite midsummer treat, but before I could get to the counter, I was beckoned over to the Persian rug by the most beautiful girl I have ever seen. Her name was Freya, and she and a group of pagans had recently made a pilgrimage to all five troll statues to perform a divination of sorts, the point being, she was infatuated with me. Also, I invited her to my apartment for a movie that weekend, and she accepted. I left the cafe with my heart pounding like Thor's hammer. But then a horrible thought came to me. What would we watch? I racked my brain for hours and hours, and then it came to me. I remembered a film from my childhood called Guten Ragnarok about an expedition to Finnmark in Norway to crack a Viking riddle and unlock the secret to immortality. And where will I find such an esoteric movie? No streaming services carried it, and I wasn't yet confident enough about our relationship to buy it on DVD. But then I remembered Scarecrow Video. I called them up, and sure enough, they had it. The date was fantastic, and we enjoyed the mystical romance for the next 12 months. Sadly, she moved back to Port Townsend last week, but those memories Scarecrow made possible would always be with me. As part of the Redmond Town Center redevelopment plan, I propose we allocate a permanent new home for Scarecrow Video right in the heart of it. I believe we could turn the center plaza into an outdoor movie theater with four screens providing 360-degree panorama of foreign and avant-garde cinema. This would transform a forgettable suburban shopping mall into a regional destination. Also, to make this work, we would really need to open some space. Scarecrow's library has nearly 150,000 titles, so I recently took a walking tour of town center to scope out some of the less stimulating businesses. I believe we could easily lose the Sunglass Hut, People's Playhouse, and Fit for Mom without any complaints.
And in conclusion...
My uncle Stein out in the parking lot now gonna drive me to Seattle.
Next, we have David Morton, then Radka Chapin, then Aspen Richter, then Bob Yoder, then Amber Wise.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm David Morton. Redmond emphasizes environmental sustainability, economic growth, and community well-being as core elements of its identity and future. As the home of tech giants like Microsoft, Redmond is positioned to lead in innovation, clean energy, and sustainable practices that are vital for the city's long-term success. Environmental sustainability drives much of Redmond's urban planning and development. The 2021 Washington Climate Commitment Act is a crucial legislative framework that supports the city's environmental goals by enabling state agencies to implement cap and trade or carbon tax programs. This aligns with Redmond's ambitious target of reducing greenhouse gas emissions to net zero by 2050. Washington's cap and and invest program, which channels significant investments into renewable energy, energy efficiency, and green jobs, is essential for achieving these reductions while also ensuring economic growth. Redmond's economic strategy is linked to its environmental objectives. The city's economy, deeply rooted in the tech industry, benefits from policies that promote innovation, including development of clean energy solutions. This focus on sustainability not only helps reduce the city's carbon footprint, but also enhances Redmond's reputation as a hub for progressive sustainable business practices, attracting further investment and top talent. As Redmond's population grows, sustainable infrastructure projects and improved transit services are critical for maintaining community well-being. Washington's investments in transportation and environmental programs support Redmond's ability to manage its growth sustainably, ensuring that the city remains livable while minimizing environmental impacts. Equity and inclusion are integral to Redmond's approach to sustainability and economic development. The city prioritizes programs that benefit low and moderate income households, such as energy efficiency upgrades that reduce utility bills. Redmond also focuses on supporting vulnerable populations, including BIPOC residents and those living in areas most affected by pollution. By addressing these social and economic disparities, Redmond ensures that its environmental and economic goals are inclusive and equitable. Overall, Redmond's commitment to environmental goals, economic vitality, and equity positions the city as a leader in sustainability and innovation. Through its comprehensive approach, Redmond is building a prosperous, equitable, and sustainable future as a forward-thinking and resilient community. Thank you.
Next, we have Radka Chapin, then Aspen Richter, then Bob Yoder, then Amber Wise.
Good evening. Our family has lived in Redmond for above 15 years. We have lived in our home north of Grass Lawn Park for 12 and a half years in what has been a quiet cul-de-sac. The situation... The situation is about to change drastically. Large corporations are buying up residential property, demolishing perfectly livable houses, and building giant mansions in their place, with enormous climate, environmental, social, economic, and health impacts to the neighborhoods and residents. Such development is coming to our quiet cul-de-sac. A construction corporation recently bought two houses on our street, one is directly adjacent, the other two doors down, that they plan to demolish and build monstrosities in their place, five times the size of the existing homes. One has already applied for a demolition permit. The house they plan to demolish is 1,290 square feet. The permit application indicates that what they want to replace it with is a mansion over 5,000 square feet. As per the permit application, the plan is for 4,257 square feet of dwelling area, plus covered porch area, uncovered porch area, garage. Total area of construction, 5,630 square feet. The lot is 7,700 square feet. The houses on our street are much smaller in size than what is being proposed, averaging less than 2,000 square feet. We've recently got a taste of what it means to live in a huge demolition and construction zone when somebody was running a jackhammer. We lasted for an hour in our house before we had to leave because the noise was unbearable. I filed a complaint with the City of Redmond, and it was then that I learned a stunning fact. Construction corporations are exempt from all noise regulations for 12 hours a day, Monday to Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and nine hours on Saturdays, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Construction corporations are permitted to create any amount of noise, including noise that is deemed unsafe for human health, all this is within the city code. I have been asking what steps the city will take to protect our health and well-being from the impacts these corporations are planning to create, and the answer is none. I run a small business from our home, working as a clinical social worker and a mental health therapist, providing telehealth therapy to a wide range of patients. There is absolutely no way I can continue my therapy practice and my business with the background noise of jackhammers, bulldozers, chainsaws, and other heavy machinery for 12 hours a day for years to come. I have asked what steps the city will take to protect the existence of my business, and the answer is none. How is it possible that a large corporation with unlimited resources can be permitted by the city to destroy a small, immigrant-woman-owned business that actually benefits the community? Over the years, I have provided healthcare to hundreds of people. The city talks about expanding access to mental health. How is destroying a business that provides that exact service meeting the city's goal?
We can end right here. Thank you. Next is Aspen Richter, then Bob Yoder, then Amber Wise.
Thank you, Aspen Richter, Redmond resident. I am here regarding the four crashes of stolen vehicles into hashtag the business in the former Western Ware Building. And just very brief comment, the city actions that I, as just a citizen, am aware of have felt inadequate to the safety of private property and business property in the city. And it feels like the actions taken or not taken, in some cases, have been very constrained, and frankly, sometimes it's very baffling. For example, refusing to allow an eco-block due to an 80/80 concern, and then placing a bike rack in the exact same place as the denied eco-blocks. And I just wanted to say that my hope would be that if there was an unusual, very targeted crime in Redmond, that it would lead to a response that is thoughtful and responsive, and not really a one-size-fits-all, that seems to be placing a great deal of responsibility on the crime victim, without also providing tools to support preventing the crime. So I'm just asking to please take steps so that citizens in Redmond know that businesses in our city are supported by the city, and that crime will be discouraged and not allowed. Thank you.
Next is Bob Yoder, then Amber Wise.
Hello, nice to meet you, Council and Mayor. I've said this before, the success of the Silver Cloud of Homeless Project in Overlake is a litmus test for the future downtown Plymouth housing project. Though with good intentions, the project is failing miserably. I've been there twice. The project was approved two years ago, and so far, only 10 homeless reside there. The operator says 15 total homeless will be housed. They are no sooner than mid-September. The facility is defined as an emergency housing until 100 studio apartments are complete, sometime in, who knows, 2027, 2028, or maybe never at all. There's no construction to be seen. When I went there last, an incompetent county agency, who I think you all know, I know the governor knows, the mayor, blames the supply chain and permitting for the delay. Mayor Bernie, you and other electeds are now given new authority to take over on the implementation process of screening homeless candidates for expediting entry, and to establish transparency that we don't now have. Mayor Bernie, please step in and please act expeditiously to fill what's now called Haven Heights with permanent supportive housing, as it was intended. I dropped by last Tuesday and saw three staff idling in the lobby, and we had a good chat. Four of them have college degrees, nice people, but with too much, but not too much to do. The staff said each resident has a phone, there's no curfew, but they're out more than three days a week, they must call in. I mingled with three of the homeless, and they look normal to me. They get Orca's cards, and a van takes them shopping. So far, Trader Joe's and the Dollar Store are popular. The operator's safety and security plan of contact wasn't available when I asked, and they're having a community meeting this Thursday, 6:00 PM. I hope that some can come. They canceled the earlier meeting. It's located right behind Goodwill. The fenced building looks formidable, but it's very plush inside. So I hope some of you can make it. The address is 2122 152nd Avenue Northeast. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Amber Wise, and I'm here on behalf of UFCW 3000, which proudly represents thousands of grocery workers across our region, in support of the resolution opposing the Kroger-Albertsons merger. And I want to highlight the critical issue of the proposed divestiture of stores to CNS Wholesale. This merger between Kroger and Albertsons threatens to reshape the grocery landscape in ways that will harm workers, consumers, and local economies. Combining two of the largest grocery chains would create a dominant force with unprecedented market control, leading to job losses, lower wages, and decreased competition. But beyond the obvious dangers of consolidation, we must also consider the impact of the proposed divestiture plan to CNS Wholesale grocers. Kroger and Albertsons have suggested that by selling hundreds of stores to CNS Wholesale, they can avoid antitrust concerns and maintain competition. However, this plan is deeply flawed. CNS is primarily a wholesale distributor with limited experience in operating retail grocery stores at this scale. They have no track record of managing such a large portfolio of stores, and there's a significant risk that these stores could fail under their management. When these stores struggle or close, it's not just a business decision, it's a catastrophe for workers who will lose their jobs, and for the communities who will lose access to essential services. We've seen this scenario play out before. When companies divest stores to smaller or less experienced operators, those stores often end up closing, leaving workers unemployed and communities underserved. In past mergers, divested stores have frequently ended up shuttered within a few years, failing to provide the promised competition, and instead creating food deserts. This merger is not just about business, it's about real people, our families, our friends, and our neighbors, who rely on these jobs and these stores to make a living and put food on the table. Moreover, we cannot ignore the broader impact on consumer prices and food access. If CNS Wholesale cannot sustain these stores, we are likely to see increased prices due to reduced competition and decreased availability of fresh, affordable groceries. This is especially concerning for low-income communities and communities of color, which are already disproportionately affected by grocery store closures and limited access to healthy food options. We have to ask, who benefits from this merger? It's certainly not the workers who face job insecurity and diminished working conditions. It's certainly not the consumers who will face higher prices and fewer choices. And it's certainly not our local businesses, who will be squeezed out eventually by a supermarket giant with way too much power. The only clear winners here are Kroger and Albertsons, who stand to increase their profits at the expense of everyone else. Councilmembers, by opposing this merger and the ill-conceived divestiture plan, you can stand up for workers, protect our local economy, and ensure that our communities are not left behind. We need strong, experienced operators in our grocery market, not an untested wholesaler that might put profit before people. We support passing this resolution because we believe it sends a powerful message that we value good jobs, competitive markets, and the right of every community member to have access to affordable, quality groceries. Thank you for your time.
We have two people that signed in online, Paul Quinn and Joe Kunsler. Mr. Quinn, you have three minutes to address the Council.
Very good. Thank you for talking, listening to me tonight. So, my name's Paul Quinn, and I've written some letters, and I'm speaking to you as an individual that cares about recycling and composting, and reducing what we send to the landfill. Let's start with a reminder, two-thirds of our trash can actually be recycled or composted. When I speak of diversion rates, that means a percent of disposed tonnage diverted away from the landfill into recycling and food scraps composting. I provided you with four handouts tonight in email. The first handout in Table 3 shows Redmond's updated diversion rate year-to-date through June is down about 1% versus year-to-date June 2023. And as important, as the top graphic in the handout indicates, Redmond's diversion rate has only gotten worse since 2021. Redmond's 2030 diversion rate goal is 70%, and that large gap indicates this city needs a new, innovative approach to improve diversion rates. Handout 2 provides several specific recommendations for improving diversion rates. In addition, I'm pleased to recommend a pilot program called Smart Disposal to help significantly improve the city's diversion rates. The cost of the pilot program is approximately $200,000. Handout number three outlines how Smart Disposal works in some detail. I would also now briefly describe what Smart Disposal is. Smart Disposal weighs each container emptied by the hauler for each single-family home. This system, through a postcard mail to each resident, provides data specific to the resident based on their address, including a landfill diversion rate per pickup and a trend line over time. I have provided handout number four to show an example postcard report to residents. This system helps us move from a toss-and-forget mindset towards making better choices. We all know that feedback through measurement works, because our water, electricity, and gas are all metered, helping us to moderate our use. Smart Disposal effectively meters our actual use of the disposal utility. During the pilot, the city will work with its hauler and a limited set of residents to demonstrate the effectiveness of Smart Disposal in significantly improving diversion rates. I'm quite willing to meet with city staff to review how the pilot works, and provide detailed information of the budgeted costs and activities in the project. People in the City of Redmond want to live sustainably. They need innovative tools and the leadership of this council to help them increase their rate of recycling and composting. Join me in implementing a Smart Disposal pilot, and let's get diversion rate moving to achieve the city's 2030 target. Thank you.
Mr. Kunsler, you have three minutes to address the Council.
Why, thank you, Bernie, for hearing your voice. I was listening on YouTube, so I'm sorry about the delay there. A couple of thoughts, and I'd like to address the public hearing at the same time tonight, if that's okay. Okay, I'll go ahead.
Mr. Kunsler, we're having a hard time hearing you, is there a way that you could speak a little louder?
Yeah, can you hear me now? Because I got the microphone right up against my mouth. You know, let me try something here. You know, I'm really grateful you guys are doing this resolution, and I really appreciate it. Audio, video, would be changed to micro. Can you hear me now? Much better?
It's a little bit better, but it's still pretty quiet.
All right. I will speak right in the microphone. You know, I really appreciate you guys are doing a resolution to defend the Climate Commitment Act. This is a fool's gold of a tax cut to vote less, to get less.
Oh, Mr. Kunsler, if I can interrupt you, I think if you're going to speak on opposition or support of the ballot measure, then you want to speak during our public hearing, not during items from the audience.
Oh, I wanted to speak to two different issues, but, you know, can you call me back during the hearing, please?
Yes, we will do that.
All right, I'll keep the other part of it brief, but I really think that Mr. Zimmerman should have been thrown out tonight. I have a lot of thoughts on it, because you're being so nice, I'm just going to leave it at... I really find Mr. Zimmerman offensive and fascist, and the lie, "People are not writing Sound Transit," it's not true, I write Sound Transit. And we'll talk about the CCA at the appropriate time. Thanks, I'll wait for your call, thank you.
Thank you. Continue to work on our technical issue. That is all of the items from the audience for now, and items from the audience is closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be polled? Council Vice President?
Item 3.
Item 3 has been polled. Any other items to be polled? Seeing none, there are two resolutions to read into the record. Item number 4, Resolution Number 1585, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending the user fee schedule for public fees associated with extended usage of the right-of-way for construction activity. And Resolution Number 1586, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, opposing the Kroger-Albertsons merger. And with that, this is a voice vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes seven to zero. Would anyone like to move item number 3?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Council Vice President, would you like to speak to the item?
Thanks, I just had a couple of questions for our Director of Human Resources.
And we'll have Director Laird come right up.
Hello, Director Laird, thanks for entertaining my questions tonight. Just had a couple of questions, I was unavailable for one of the last conversations, so I just wanted to ask a few quick questions. I know that in the past, the Salary Commission has had the opportunity to interview council members or send a survey. Is that opportunity going to be available if they request?
If the Salary Commission does request it, yes, it's available.
Okay, great. And then, the other question was what, the last process that went through, there were a lot of concerns about public transparency through the process. So what are the available mechanisms for the community to follow along during this cycle?
So what's going to happen is, it's a public meeting, and so the public will be noticed within 24 hours before the meeting starts. So we will do that public notice, and then during the meeting, they have the option to either call in by teams, call in by phone, or come in person to witness and participate if they want to in the process.
Okay, but those meetings will not be livestreamed anywhere?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, that's all I had. And I have a statement afterwards.
We're ready. Great, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up question, Director. Will, in the instructions and in the information that you give to the commission, will the city be proactive in letting them know what their options are, including the one that Council Vice President Forsyth just asked you about? Or will they just not know and maybe not ask because they didn't know?
Well, we weren't really planning to share that with them unless that was something that they had brought up, but if they bring it up, and it did occur in '18, it did occur in '23, so my guess is they're probably going to be requesting, what did we do in the past, and we can share that. So, and it's absolutely fine if they want to do that.
So there won't be any proactive action on the city's part to let them know? to let them know that and the other things that they might be able to do? It's all on them? Right. That's, I understand your answer. Okay, thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I know this is a good amount of time that we'll ask the Salary Commission candidates to spend during this commission, and just want to say thank you to those who have stepped up to volunteer for this role. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council Vice President?
I'll go ahead and do my comment now. It was along the same lines as Council President Kritzner of just welcoming to the new commissioners, especially those who are serving for the first time, and especially to those who have applied for commissions and boards in the past, and this is their first time being selected.
All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, we're going to do a voice vote on this as well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that carries seven to zero. And with that, we have approved the appointment of salary commissioners. And I know we have some in our audience today who would like to be sworn in. If they wouldn't mind coming on up, we will do that for you. We have four. Fantastic. Everyone just kind of stand right here because I have to use the microphone. So I will read the oath, and then everyone, after I'm done, will say I do or I will, if you're in agreement. And then you'll go and sign your oath over there, and then go shake the council's hands. All right, raise your right hand. Do you, Amy Barnes, Jason Antonelli, Musam Chrismucks, Arnold Tomac, and Hank Mardison, having been duly appointed to the Redmond Seller Commission of the City of Redmond, Washington, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as prescribed by law and to the best of your ability, and that you will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Redmond, the laws and the Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America.
And I will.
Congratulations. So go ahead and go over here. Then our next item of business is a public hearing on the purpose of considering passage of a resolution opposing Initiative 2117. So Resolution Number 1587, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, opposing Initiative Number 2117 relating to the repeal of the Climate Commitment Act and prohibiting carbon tax credit trading scheduled for this November 5, 2024, in the general election. The public hearing is now open. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak in person tonight. When I call your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. As a reminder, speaking in support of the resolution is speaking in opposition to the Initiative 2117. Speaking in opposition to the resolution of the council is speaking in support of Initiative 2117, and we'll make sure everyone stays clear on that. We also have one sign up online as well. We have 22 people signed up this evening, and everyone gets three minutes, just to give you a understanding how long this will be. So I will, once again, do just the same as I did with items from the audience. I'll read like the first four names or so, so you know when you're coming up. So we'll start with Darren Little, Lisa Tracy, William King, TJ Horner, excuse me, and then Kelly Reefer. Please.
Hello, I'm Darren Little. Although I don't live in Redmond, my great-great-grandfather is William Perrigo, who helped settle Redmond. So I've been around this region for, my family's been around this region for a long time. Today, I'm here as the campaign manager for Let's Go Washington and to give voice to the 1.3 million Washington voters who sign their names to qualify the fall initiatives. 57% of the people who signed are Democrat or independent voters. This is a common sense issue. 2117 repeals the most regressive tax in state history, which hurts low-income and middle-income communities the most. Despite Governor Inslee's promise that the Climate Commitment Act would only cost families pennies, independent media fact-checkers, and even the government's own economists note that the Climate Commitment Act has increased gas prices by about 50 cents so far and will go up to about a dollar per gallon as time goes on. This is in addition to the home heating costs that have gone up about 40% across the state because of the Climate Commitment Act. This is increasing the cost of goods and services and increasing the cost of living for every resident in the state. They knew it would drive up gas prices, but they continue to mislead on that issue. The second biggest issue is the fact that it is not working. The architects of the CCA cannot point to a single piece of data showing carbon has been reduced since the implementation of the act. There is a lot of rhetorical commitment to climate policy, but no real accountability for climate policy outcomes. As Joe Fitzgibbon recently admitted, the state isn't tracking the results of state spending on CO2 reduction. And even if they did, there is no effort to hold agencies accountable for the failed efforts. More money is spent on government planning and new government staff than on salmon recovery. More money is spent on permitting and writing strategy plans than on reducing the risk of catastrophic wildfire. While low-income workers face higher gas and food costs, many of the subsidies for electric vehicle charging, rooftop solar panels, and bike lanes go to the wealthy. Too much of the money is being given to political special interests rather than being spent on actual projects. Finally, there have been false claims that passing 2117 would cut road and bridge funding. Let me be clear. None of the money from the Climate Commitment Act can be used for roads and bridges. Not a single penny can be used for roads and bridges. I have asthma. My three-year-old son has asthma. We need to do something, but we need to do something that works. The Climate Commitment Act is a broken program that might make people feel good so they can go about their day, but it does not actually address the problem. I'm asking you to stand with me and the millions of Washingtonians who are tired of paying more for less, who have seen the failures of the CCA and are asking for better from our government. I'm sincerely asking you to vote yes on 2117 this fall. We have a chance to fix what's broken for our next generation. Please oppose 1587 tonight. Thank you.
Next is Lisa Tracy, then William King, then TJ Horner, then Kelly Reefer, then Nate Niederhausen.
Hello, my name is Lisa Tracy. My zip code is 98052. I live here on Education Hill and have for 45 years. I am concerned about the Climate Commitment Act. In my opinion, I cannot find any accountability for what they do with the money, unless they choose to write a report. But there's no requirement anywhere that they have to be accountable, that they have to tell us what they did, or, worse yet, that it was successful. So they can take our money, and they do, and they can experiment, and they can fail, but they don't have to tell you that they failed. If you're really good, you might be able to read the books, you might be able to read the statements, you might be able to figure it out. But if you're just a mom, or a grandma, or a regular citizen, and you don't have time to pour for hours over those books, you'll never know unless someone else tells you. They're taking my tax dollars, and they're using them without tracking success. I run a budget, you run a budget. It's not feasibility that is driving this, it is desire. If you have a budget item and it's failing, it's not wise to continue. It's your responsibility to track that. I wish the state did. For 14 years, the State of Washington has missed its legally required target to purchase biodiesel for 20% of its diesel purchases. The most the state has ever purchased was 13% in 2015. In 2022, it purchased only 8.3%, well under half of the goal that they set, and they are falling further behind each year. In 2019, Governor Inslee signed an order requiring that 50% of new vehicles purchased by state agencies would be electric by 2021. Even in 2023, after the state recovered from COVID restrictions, only 25% of new state vehicles were EV vehicles. That's half the promised amount, but still far better than anything our city has done. Our solar panels on City Hall were projected to recover less than 20% of the cost of installation through solar generation. City staff made the estimate. We don't know whether it's generated. We don't know what those stats are because we don't have that. We have no reduced utility bills for it. We just get notice of increases. I would ask you to support 2117 and let the voters of Redmond and let the voters of Washington decide for themselves whether this is a good use of our money or if we should try a new plan. It's not our job to tell them what our city's going to do. It's their responsibility to go and vote. Thank you.
Next is William King, then TJ Horner, then Kelly Reefer, then Nate Niederhausen, then Kirk Hovenkotter.
Okay, this quick. Hello again. My name is Bill King, and I've lived in downtown Redmond for eight years. Thank you for holding this hearing. I support this resolution against I-2117. Not only would it endanger funding for important projects here in Redmond, it would cripple our state's ability to fight pollution and climate change. As I said in my earlier comment, I get around without a car, and I-2117 would shift the cost of pollution out of people like me while also eliminating funding for safe infrastructure and transit. Please pass this resolution against I-2117. Thank you.
Next is TJ Horner, Kelly Reefer, Nate Niederhausen, and Kirk Hovenkotter, and Scott Aldridge.
Good evening. My name is TJ Horner, and I live in Redmond. I'd like to thank the council for taking the time to consider this resolution and for the opportunity to speak about it. There's no question that human accelerated climate change is real. We're already demonstrably experiencing its effects, and by many accounts, have reached the point where some are permanent and irreversible. There's still time to mitigate the worst of the worst, but in order to do that, we must take swift and sweeping action to reduce emissions. I believe it's only right that I put my money where my mouth is. My girlfriend and I both live car-free in Redmond, relying on our bikes and public transportation to get around, which is by far the most significant reduction an individual can make to their carbon footprint. I appreciate the work done by the city to make Redmond's bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure safe enough so that this is possible. However, individual action will simply not make enough of an impact with the time we have. I also recognize that it's currently infeasible for many people in Washington to ditch their cars, even if they want to, as a result of obstacles in our built environment like suburban sprawl and lack of transit access. The Climate Commitment Act addresses both of these by strategically targeting our state's largest polluters, compelling them to reduce or offset emissions through financial incentives, then using the revenue from it to fund critical projects across Washington. These projects will not only help mitigate the future effects of climate change, but will have immediate and tangible benefits to our communities, such as safer streets, better health by way of cleaner air, expanded transit access for more people, and much more. Revenue from the CCA has already materially benefited our community right here in Redmond. For example, by making it possible for King County Metro to provide fair, free service to people 18 and under since 2022, reducing their dependence on their own personal vehicles or an adult to drive them around, which is something I'm sure parents appreciate. It has also uplifted some of our most vulnerable community members by funding expanded pair transit access, granting independence to those that cannot or do not wish to rely on a personal vehicle. Both of these projects help reduce emissions and improve equitability in our community, and they wouldn't have been possible without the CCA. Initiative 2117 would prohibit the cap and invest strategy at the core of the CCA and prevent Washington from reaching its climate goals by slashing funding to these invaluable projects. And, quite frankly, with this level of urgency, we can't rely on corporations to reduce emissions on their own without some sort of economic incentive. I support this resolution against Initiative 2117 in order to ensure a safer, healthier, and more connected Redmond for generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Next is Kelly Reefer, then Nate Niederhausen, then Kirk Hovenkotter, Scott Aldridge, and Rhea Wren.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Kelly Reefer, and I'm the Executive Director of Move Redmond, and I'm here in strong support of your resolution to vote no on 2117 this fall. I think about the longstanding impacts of climate change and the future that my daughter is going to face. And I think about the future generations and what our air and water are going to be like. And it is not about individual action alone. We need both individual changes and systemic changes to reach our climate goals. The Climate Commitment Act is a nice combination of both of those, right? When we make investments in the Climate Commitment Act to improve pedestrian safety with bike-ped bridges and funding, the $25 million of funding to go to the East Trail that helps connect communities on the east side, that changes people's trips. Every single trip that isn't taken driving alone, that's an impact. That is cleaner air, that is less emissions that we are facing in our communities. The free youth transit is shifting not only the kinds of transportation habits that our youth are developing around Washington State, but they're also changing the way that families' lives are. They make it more economically feasible for students to take after-school activities and get a ride home without worrying about their parents having to chauffeur them around. These are real, tangible impacts that we see in our community, and they are honestly the scratch of the surface of what this funding is doing for us. It is critical that we are thinking about entire ecosystems. Our FISH passage is just as critical as the Safe Roots to School funding that are funded through the Climate Commitment Act. No on 2117 is a smart vote for our future and for our current present. These things that we care about, the bicycle, pedestrian, and transit infrastructure that enhance mobility for the 25% of non-drivers in Washington State, they are going to be impacted negatively immediately if the initiative passes. So thank you so much for lifting forward this resolution and showing that Redmond is a leader in supporting climate and that Washington is a leader in supporting our mitigation and preparation of climate change. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Next is Nate Niederhausen, then Kirk Hovenkotter, Scott Aldridge, Rhea Wren, and Adam Powell.
Are you ready? Hi, Mayor, Council. It's good to see all of you again, many familiar faces. I'm just here as a concerned citizen in Redmond. When I found out kind of that you were talking about this Initiative 2117, some things popped into my mind. It's how I view it as a bipartisan issue among citizens, where, again, I think it was Darren referenced that, you know, 57% of those that signed the initiatives were Democrat or independent. And did some traveling this summer out of state and came back. Well, when I was traveling, it's like, oh, wow, gas prices is like, some places it was like $3.25. Come back here, it's just under $5. And I think that's one of the biggest things for me and my family and the neighbors is just kind of the increase in gas prices. We've got inflation that's, you know, increased, and then we've got, our home energy prices have gone up a bit. I just checked my PSC bill a couple of days ago and found that it's gone up 50 bucks same time last year over that time. And I think it just impacts a lot of people that have to drive to work, that have to heat their homes, cool it off in the summer. And I know we, you know, we've got to find this. And I know we've got to find this right balance of everything, because we do need these things in place, but for the moment, I just encourage you, and I have to get this right, because if I oppose, then, anyway. I'm here in support of Initiative 2117, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Next is Kirk Hovenkotter, Scott Aldridge, Rhea Ren, Adam Powell, and Yuan Meng Zhao.
Thank you so much. I'm Kirk Hovenkotter, I'm the Executive Director of Transportation Choices Coalition. We are Washington State's nonprofit advocate for safe, sustainable, and equitable transportation. I'm here to voice our support for this resolution, to vote no on 2117. 2117 would repeal the Climate Commitment Act. This is the main source of funding for the Move Ahead Washington Transportation Package, which funds free youth transit for the 1.6 million residents of Washington State under the age of 18. It funds more frequent bus service for working families across our state, and it funds more frequent paratransit service, which means shorter waits for seniors at places like Emerald Heights. Washington has too much to lose if 2117 is repealed. And I'm so proud to be able to call Redmond my hometown, and that this is one of the first cities in the entire state that is taking a stance to say no on 2117. So thank you for your leadership, and I commend you for doing this, and I strongly support this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Next is Scott Aldridge, then Rhea Ren, then Adam Powell, then Yuan Meng Zhao, then Chelsea Leicas Schmaltz.
I'd like to thank the council for bringing up this initiative, and the importance of its stance in calling for a yes vote on this initiative, calling for a no vote on, the double negatives are very complicated. I'm reminded of another initiative that came up a number of years ago, when people were calling for the repeal of car tabs. And I remember talking to people after that vote passed, and how confused they were, where like, oh no, now that we voted yes on this, there are consequences. Many voters don't link revenue issues with the things that they are spent on, and I think that's a structural problem with these sorts of initiatives, and I really do not like them. I really hope that our leadership in Olympia will receive this and the previous initiatives as a message to fix regressive taxation, which I think is the core issue that is being revealed by these initiatives, and I think that the initiative as worded is not achieving its objectives. We really do need to invest in transit and long-term investments to bring ourselves into net-zero climate emissions, and that's very important. Thank you for the council's time.
Rhea Ren, then Adam Powell, and Yuan Meng Zhao, Chelsea Leicas Schmaltz, Aparna, and then Aspen Richter.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Rhea Ren. I live on Education Hill with my daughters, and serve on the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee. I'm speaking only on my own behalf tonight, and I've edited for brevity. I strongly encourage Redmond to pass a resolution opposing I-2117 to ensure continued investment in essential projects. This aligns with our commitment for resiliency on things like flood mitigation and wildfire management. Rather than addressing toxic pollution and known impacts, I-2117 would shift the entire financial burden onto families, and abandons critical infrastructure projects. Editorial boards across the state and uniquely broad coalition are urging the public to reject this. Time and again, we've seen that the benefits of investing in sustainable energy and proactive steps today far outweigh the costs of inaction. Volatile combustion costs are dropping with falling demand and transition in other locations. My family and I have experienced the real impacts of changing climate and conditions firsthand, from losing a home in intense rainfall flooding, to strong inland winds damaging roofs, to the front lines of wildfire threats and firefighting. These experiences have underscored the importance of continuing to build on the progress made towards safer and more sustainable best practices. We are electrified and carbon neutral at our home, we save significant money on the upgrades, and our bills have not risen. Initiative I-2117 lacks any on-time plan or focus for transitioning to cleaner energy or reducing costs for working families. Instead, it simply ignores critical impacts here today, and roadblocks any and all steady transition, a deeply misleading blanket ban on progress and solutions. Redmond has been leading by example in embracing cleaner energy and innovative solutions that reduce overall costs, lower toxic air pollution, and enhance community resilience and well-being. I'm proud of the steps we've taken to connect Redmond's businesses and residents to practical solutions, like cooling heat pumps, installation funding, and I would point out, just hours ago, a 90-degree heat advisory was just announced as children go back to school in buildings that are not all prepared for this. Efficiency upgrades. Regionally and globally, similar efforts are reducing emissions and enhancing sustainability. Let's reaffirm our commitment to the goals outlined in Redmond's Environmental Sustainability Action Plan and Climate Emergency Declaration. Thank you.
Next is Adam Powell, then Yuan Meng Zhao, then Chelsea Leicas Schmaltz, then Aparna, then Aspen Richter, and Sophie, and I can't read your last name either, Sophie, please.
Hello, Council. Today, I am an advocate for the passage of the Washington State Initiative 2117. This initiative is a crucial step towards ensuring economic stability and fairness for all, residents of our state, and especially for residents of Redmond. Initiative 2117 is a measure that seeks to prohibit state agencies from implementing any form of carbon tax credit trading, and to repeal the Climate Commitment Act of 2021. The CCA, or known as the CCA, the CCA introduced a cap-and-invest program aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions. While the intention behind the act was noble, the implementation has had significant consequences on families and individuals. Firstly, let's talk about the economic impact. Since the CCA's implementation, we have seen a substantial increase in fuel prices. Gas prices have risen by approximately 50 cents per gallon, and diesel by 62 cents per gallon. This increase has placed a heavy burden on families and individuals, especially those living on paycheck to paycheck. By repealing the CCA, Initiative 2117 will help alleviate this financial strain, making everyday necessities more affordable for everyone. Secondly, the regressive nature of the carbon tax. The current cap-and-invest program disproportionately affects low and middle-income families. These families spend a larger portion of their income on energy and transportation cost. By eliminating this program, Initiative 2117 will promote a more equitable economic environment, ensuring that the cost of living does not continue to rise unfairly for those who can least afford it. Thirdly, the effectiveness of the CCA in reducing emissions is questionable. Despite the increased cost, the benefits to our state's air quality and global emission reduction efforts have been minimal. We need to adopt more effective and balanced approaches to environmental protection that do not place undue financial burdens on our citizens. In conclusion, Initiative 2117 is about fairness, economic stability, and effective environment policies. By supporting this initiative, we are taking a stand against regressive taxation, and advocating for a more balanced approach on environmental stewardship. Let's ensure that our policies protect our environment, our economic well-being, and the wallets of Redmond residents. Thank you.
Yuan Meng Zhao, Chelsea Leicas Schmaltz, Aparna, Aspen Richter, Sophie or Sophia, and Michelle Sackman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members and staff. I am Yuan Meng, and I am a resident of Overlake Village, who walks and takes public transportation, including the Tew Line, to get around. I would like to thank the city for looking into and considering opposing Initiative 2117. I learned just yesterday that the Climate Commitment Act, the CCA, has helped fund programs such as the Complete Streets Grant Program, which helps cities, towns, and counties pay for complete streets projects. I also learned that several transit authorities throughout Washington State also received funding to sustain their paratransit services for disabled residents. Firstly, I believe that it is exactly infrastructure changes, such as complete streets, projects, and bicycle and pedestrian overpasses, that then allow for or encourage lifestyle changes, such as walking or biking around more often. Repealing the CCA would leave Redmond, along with the rest of Washington State, stuck in a world of unsafe roads and more sedentary communities. Instead of reducing costs with this approach, I believe that it would only shift costs onto the individual, and towards other expenses such as medical expenses instead. Secondly, underrepresented communities need the most help, and disabled riders are no exception. Considering that the CCA helps sustain several paratransit services, repealing the CCA would reduce the independence of disabled riders and reduce their quality of life. In this sense, I would consider repealing the CCA not only environmentally unfriendly, but also ableist. In closing, I believe that repealing the CCA will make life more difficult for people who cannot drive, people who choose not to drive, people who row, and for people who work outdoors, or even just want to spend more time outdoors. And I again thank Council for considering opposing Initiative 2117.
Next is Chelsea Leicas Schmaltz, then Aparna, Aspen Richter, Sophie, and Michelle Sackman, then, sitting there, Steve, Tracy after that.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Leicas Schmaltz. I strongly support Redmond's resolution in opposition to I-2117. My daughter is the fourth generation of my family to live on the East Side, and the third to live in Redmond. I would be very proud to see Redmond take a position that will help protect my daughter's future. One day, our children were asked us what we did to combat climate change, and I want to tell her that we used every tool possible. So I hope that we can keep this important tool. I also want to tell her how we as a community made Redmond more livable by increasing public transit and increasing safe transit without cars. I want my daughter to have reliable public transit so she doesn't need to worry about gas prices. Thank you for your consideration.
Next is Aparna, then Aspen Richter, then Sophie, or Sophia, Michelle Sackman, Steve, Tracy, and Hank Myers.
Good evening, Council. I want to specifically state that I wrote oppose on the form because I kind of misunderstood. I'm actually here to support the resolution, and I do commend the city for taking charge on this. As a carbon accountant, and somebody who has devised internal carbon costs for a multinational corporation, I can tell you a lot of dirty secrets on the carbon accounting space. But what I can tell you for sure is that every trick in the book will be exploited. So when we do look at it from a perspective of a carbon fee, a carbon tax, a carbon dividend, it does act as a deterrent. It does, so for all the people who say that we don't know what the impact is, there is a deterrent. There are internal conversations happening, because it costs money. And the moment you account, and the moment you have auditors accounting that carbon, the carbon inventories, you are held accountable to what you're emitting, and that is what this is about. The CCA also provides the bedrock, the funding, for the CETA, the Clean Buildings Act, and a whole slew of other climate laws that Washington State has committed to already. Those will remain aspirational without the money. It's always about the money. It is, I understand the human stories about the impact, the equity, and all of that, but finally, the bottom line is money. And if we don't hold our poll leaders accountable, we are letting them get by, and there is no putting that genie back in the bottle. So please, please, vote for the resolution, and also spread the awareness. It's an awareness issue with the rest of the voters, so that's what I would say. So thank you.
And I fixed your sheet where you wrote Aparna. I fixed it for you on it. Thank you. Next is Aspen Richter, then Sophie, and you'll have to tell me what your last name is, Michelle Sackman, Steve, Tracy, and Hank Myers.
My name is Aspen Richter, I'm a resident of Redmond. I have three children, I work in the field of environmental sustainability, I'm very involved in our public school district and our PTAs. In fact, I'm the current Sustainability Chair for Lake Washington PTSA, which is the council-level PTSA that brings together our member PTSAs from 56 different school sites around Lake Washington School District, including a number of schools in Redmond. The benefits of the Climate Commitment Act are so clear for our schools and for our students, I'd especially reference what Kelly Reefer said earlier, that the Washington State PTA, the organization that coordinates and supports over 830 local PTSAs in our state, has formally voted to oppose I-2117, and that allows me as a member to come to you and say, Washington State PTSA opposes this. Our Lake Washington Council PTSA Board has also voted to oppose I-2117, and will be bringing this to a membership vote this Thursday with expected agreement, but we'll see what happens. As a member of the Washington State PTA, myself, as the Sustainability Chair appointed by our local Lake Washington PTSA Board, I'm here to say, I oppose, and the Washington State PTSA opposes I-2117. I support this resolution. Furthermore, the PTSA's 80,000-plus members already support and have voted to support mitigating adverse impacts of climate change, which pose a direct threat to the health and well-being of all children and youth. Washington State PTSA also supports ample funding for schools. For school districts and related infrastructure to school districts, the Climate Commitment Act funds projects such as energy efficiency, small district monetization, zero-emission school buses, safe routes to school, and HVAC upgrades. The Washington State PTSA has said, "We must continue to invest in clean energy and transportation systems, and build resilience to heat and weather-related effects if we hope to have a better tomorrow for our children and youth." And so I'm thinking of the roughly 7,000 public school students who live in or go to school in Redmond, when I say, "I strongly support this resolution, and I am very glad that Redmond is committed to the future of our children and our students." Thank you.
Next is Sophia, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name on here.
No worries.
And then Michelle Sackman, Steve, Tracy, Hank Myers, and then David Morton.
Hi, I'm Sophia Escalona, and I work in Redmond, and I've grown up in Washington, and I'm here to oppose I-2117. I do a lot of outreach for work at events in Redmond, especially where we get between like 50 to like 100, 200 people. Most recently, we were at Redmond Pride, Happy Pride, and consistently, people talk about how much they love the light rail, they're so excited for it to go across the bridge, and also about how they're so excited for Free Youth Orca Cards. And as people have said before, if I-2117 passed, it would end funding for Free Youth Orca Cards, and that is not so great. Also, I was riding the ferry yesterday, and I don't rely on it for my daily transportation, but I know a lot of people do, my professor did, for example, and a lot of people take it for weekend trips, or just to get away for the weekend. And if I-2117 passed, then it would cut capacity and funding to the ferry, which could mean no more beautiful sunsets across the water on the ferry. In conclusion, if I-2117 passes, the costs and impacts of pollution fall on us, the students, workers, council members, instead of the corporations causing this pollution. Thank you for your time.
Next is Michelle Sackman, Steve, Tracy, Hank Myers.
Michelle Sackman.
David Morton.
When the legislature passed the CCA law, we were told by Governor Jay Inslee that it would cost mere pennies, or that it could even lower the price of gas. At that time, even he knew that that wasn't true, because his own advisor told him it would increase the price of gas by 46 cents a gallon. Doing the math, I realized that every time I filled my gas tank, that would be $6.50 in new tax, and you can add a dollar or two more on that, on top of that, if your car's bigger than my small sedan. That's not pennies. Worse, this is during a time of high inflation, when people are struggling with the much higher cost of groceries, which are affected by higher fuel costs to deliver them. There seemed to be little concern on the part of the legislature, or Inslee himself, over the fact that this hidden tax would strain everyday Washingtonians with higher gas and food prices. Then, while watching a Seattle Times Roundtable where reporters questioned representatives of yes on 2117, as well as those who oppose it, I was surprised to learn that there is no mechanism in place to measure the effectiveness of all this spending. And while the largest, wealthiest companies in town like Microsoft and Amazon had already been spending their own money on projects been spending their own money on projects that they believed to be good for the environment, I also learned that this hidden gas tax that takes money from all of us was to give large chunks of that money to these same large wealthy companies to do the very same things that they were already happily spending their own money on. No wonder these billionaire companies love the CCA so much. It's a massive hidden transfer of wealth from the little guy to them. That's unacceptable. It's also very interesting to note that the billionaires in town fighting 2117 got the fuel in their private jets exempted from the CCA tax. We learned last year from a Seattle Times article that over half of Washingtonians said they would move out of Washington if they could because it's too expensive here. Runaway taxes and fees like this are contributing to the problem. By voting yes on 2117 and all four initiatives that will be at the top of our ballot this fall, we can look forward to making Washington more affordable. Thank you.
Next is Steve Tracy, then Hank Myers, then David Morton, then Devin Kellogg, then Bob Yoder, then Ben Benoy.
My name is Stephen Tracy. My zip code is 98052. I am a Education Hill resident, also for the last 45 years, and I have watched Redmond grow from a sleepy little town into, well, I'm not sure what it's grown into. I stand here tonight, not to get down in the weeds with you, about the pros and cons of 2117. As has been previously stated, I just wanted to reiterate, the CCA Act is, uh, simply licensed for, uh, the state to have at the, uh, the wallets of common citizens like me. That's all it is, just a license. There's little accountability, as has been previously stated. You have presented us with a city revolution, resolution saying that you want to reject this, uh, measure, 2117. Where's the other side? We don't know what went on in your closed sessions. We don't know what kind of debate you guys had, if there was any at all. We'd like to know the, I mean, personally, myself, I'd like to know the other side, if there was any, any debate on this at all, or is this just a priority that you're going to reject it and you're just letting us talk to waste our breath? I see my time is up.
We still have a minute.
It's getting close. But I would ask you to really consider what you're rejecting, because I'm not sure that you have. That's just my opinion. Thank you very much.
Next is Hank Myers, and then David Morton, Devin Kellogg, Bob Yoder, and Ben Benoy.
Albert Einstein said insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. The repeated failures of many state environmental programs under Governor Inslee have cost hundreds of millions of dollars and resulted in no carbon reduction. Representative Joe Fitzgibbon, as you heard, the primary sponsor of the Climate Commitment Act, admitted there are no plans, goals, or metrics for the billions already collected, only hopes and aspirations. Money is being pledged to the most needy, but only if they vote to defeat I-2117. In the private sector, if a conditional offer is made to somebody to elicit an outcome, it would be called a bribe, and Bob Ferguson would be suing. Twenty years ago, I was a contractor for Microsoft with a job of reducing single-occupant commutes by creating car pools, van pools, and new bus routes. While I directed the program, it was given its first state diamond award for effectiveness. As a former contractor, I can tell you that Microsoft is results-oriented and does not spend money on feel-good projects. Microsoft's amazing work resulted in actual and significant reductions in carbon footprint, and I'm disappointed that they and other corporations are supporting a program that does the opposite of what their own successful practices do. I'm also disappointed that one percenter such as Bill Gates, for whom the carbon tax is not even a pittance, want the rest of us to continue to pay $600 to $800 a year. That's a lot of money for a family that depends on their cars and trucks to earn a living and to support their businesses. The CCA elect subsidies for electric cars and solar panels is elitist. The benefits go to the wealthy, but are paid for by everyone else. What should we do instead? Well, by all means, we should fine the polluters. We should tax them, we should take the money, we should create the economic disincentives to have a gas, uh, carbon, uh, carbon emissions. I support free-market environmentalists and economists, including the data-driven Washington Policy Center, that favor a revenue-neutral carbon tax. It would collect the same money from the same polluters with the same results, but return 100% to the families of Washington who pay the eventual cost. The state could have done this instead of the CCA, but wanted to keep all the money in the state treasury. I want to remind you that all the programs you've heard about that are being threatened, uh, if the CCA does, uh, doesn't remain, are, were already in effect before the CCA was even proposed. Now they're being threatened to be cut if the CEA, CCA is defeated. My biggest complaint about the Climate Commitment Act is that there is no commitment, unless, of course, you define commitment as what the state does to people with severe mental illness. So I guess 8 million Washingtonians are being committed to do a very costly program of treatment with no plan for a cure. Thank you.
Next is David Morton, then Devin Kellogg, then Bob Yoder, then Ben Benoy.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm David Morton. I support the council's opposition to initiative 2117, which has detrimental impacts on environmental sustainability, economic growth, and community well-being. I-2117 seeks to repeal the Climate Commitment Act, or CCA, and to prohibit state agencies from implementing cap and trade in carbon tax programs. This would effectively dismantle Washington's cap and invest program, which aims to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 95% by 2050. What's the environmental impact of I-2117? The CCA's cap and invest program is critical for combating climate change in urban areas like Redmond, where environmental sustainability is a key priority. By capping carbon emissions and creating financial incentives for businesses to reduce their carbon footprint, the CCA aligns with Redmond's goals of reducing emissions and improving air quality. Repealing the CCA would lead to increased greenhouse gas emissions and contribute to more severe climate impacts like extreme weather events, poor air quality, and rising temperatures, which could adversely affect health and quality of life for Redmond residents. What are the economic consequences of I-2117? Redmond's economy is deeply connected to tech giants and benefits from policies that foster innovation and clean energy solutions. The CCA incentivizes the reduction of emissions and drives investment in renewable energy, energy efficiency, and green jobs. Repealing the CCA would stifle this momentum and harm Redmond's reputation as a hub for forward-thinking and sustainable business practices. The loss of billions in investments from the state's transportation and environmental programs could negatively impact infrastructure projects, including transit services that are crucial for Redmond's growing population. What about community and equity considerations? Repealing the CCA would strip funding from programs that benefit low- and modern-income households like energy efficiency upgrades that help reduce utility bills. It would disproportionately harm vulnerable populations like BIPOC, BIPOC residents and those living in areas most affected by pollution. Redmond's commitment to equity and inclusion would be undermined, increasing economic and social disparities. In summary, I-2117 threatens Redmond's environmental goals and economic vitality and commitment to equity. Opposing I-2117 aligns with the city's values of sustainability, innovation, and community well-being. Please adopt the resolution opposing I-2117. Thank you.
Next is Devin Kellogg, then Bob Yoder, then Ben Benoy.
Good evening, Mayor Bernie, and council members. My name is Devin Kellogg. I'm a parent and longtime Education Hill resident, here to support your resolution to oppose initiative 2117, which, if passed, would irrevocably harm our most effective climate mitigation law to date. I advocate on this issue with the Washington State PTA and the People for Climate Action, both of whom formally opposed this and other harmful initiatives on the ballot this November. But tonight, I am speaking as a fellow community member who has directly benefited from the programs which I-2117 attempts to repeal. As many of us have likely experienced, the now seasonal smoke and heat events in our state have become hazardous to our health without adequate cooling and filtration. It got so hot in my home during the heat dome of 2021 that my hands and feet swelled up, and I was short of breath just walking through my house. It was terrifying to have my sanctuary nearly become my tomb. As I later learned, heat is now the deadliest weather-related health risk in the United States, and climate disrupting fossil fuel pollution itself directly responsible for one out of every five deaths worldwide. I was lucky I wasn't one of the hundreds of people in Washington that die every year now from heat and pollution-related illness. Our changing climate is also impacting farming, industry, or outdoor aggregation, building, supply chain, insurance rates, and so much more. A recent study in Nature shows climate costs are expected to skyrocket over the next decades if we don't aggressively, meet, uh, goals aggressively now. Fortunately, the solutions to stabilize the climate also help to reduce costs and mitigate existing impacts. An electric heat pump, for example, provides clean, efficient, cooling, heating, and air filtration all-in-one. It also reduces our reliance on methane gas, which is the most powerful, potent heat-trapping gas in our cities, and one of the most toxic substances in our homes, not to mention it's also a significant fire and seismic risk. It's, uh, considered the most cost-effective way to stabilize our climate and improve outcomes by, um, reducing methane. The problem is, it can be, for folks on a budget like me, it can be, uh, challenging to retrofit our homes while the markets adjust. It was only through Redmond's Energy Smart East Side program that we were able to replace our 40-year-old gas furnace with a new zero-degree electric heat pump. So far, our new heat pump has kept our indoor air cool, clean, and comfortable all summer, and I can't wait to see how much we're going to save on our heating this winter. I hope others in our situation will have this opportunity as well. This is just one example of the hundreds of ongoing projects across the state whose funding would be gutted this November if we don't collectively vote no on this harmful initiative. Other compromised projects include flood mitigation, firefighting efforts, clean energy and transportation projects, and water, um, air and water protections.
Devin, your time is, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay. I have more details in my written copy.
If, um, if, if you would like, you can email it to the mayor council, and we'll get them to, or you can hand them over to the clerk, either way. Thank you. Um, next is Bob Yoder, and then Ben Benoy, and then we have one online comment.
I thought really long and hard about this, talked to a lot of different people, and I studied biology in college, and I like to go hiking outdoors. Um, I don't like taxes at all. I'm on a fixed income, um, but then I checked out Brian Haywood. He's the primary sponsor of this initiative, and listened to him speak on YouTube, which I might put on my blog with the disclaimer. And he's a radical anti-tax resident living right here in Redmond. He's smart, he's a hedge fund manager and all this stuff, uh, but the guy's radical, and I don't like taxes either, but he, he's weird, basically. Um, as far as the local here in Redmond, I sold renewable energy door-to-door years ago using the Puget Sound bill, lowering the, uh, increase in the price of the bill, um, for carbon offsets, um, door-to-door, and it fares. We did well, and I think the first solar panel in City Hall was donated by Three Degrees, the company I worked for. The, uh, you say in the memo that Redmond could lose $750,000 for completion of the 148th Avenue Northeast Bike Ped Overpass. I think that's significant. I don't want to lose that if it's at risk. The $250,000 for the Electric Fire Engine Grant, um, also uses diesel, it has diesel, so I'm kind of wondering about that, and they're very heavy, and they can hurt roads, ruin roads. Um, then I, I hear, David, that the, uh, I saw the Toro electric mowers that are being evaluated at Hartman Park. Uh, that's interesting. It, it, I don't want to know plus or minus. Um, I really like the tribes, um, and I think they would lose $70 million in grants to protect their communities from rising sea levels, and $10 million at risk to transit mobility projects. Um, I also am very want accountability, and I don't see it really completely, if I'm reading it correctly, from Redmond, Redmond's memo. It says that you've got 2.2 million, that you already have received 2.2 million in the Climate Commitment Act already. It would be nice to know where you put that money. Um, and if you could include that information when you finish the hearing results, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Next is Ben Benoy, um, and then we'll take our online commenter.
Hi. Oh, excuse me. Hi, uh, my name is Ben Benoy. I normally come to these meetings and just, uh, listen and sometimes send emails, but this seems important. Um, so I think that, like, a lot of people have talked tonight, so I'm going to try to keep this short, but one of the things that I think is important about the, about supporting the opposition to the 2117 measure is that, like, corporations are not moral creatures. They don't do things because they're good or they're bad. They do things because of money, and that's what they're set up to do. And what the CCA does is it takes pollution and says, "This is no longer an external cost, this is something that you have to pay for," which is what, for decades, we've been saying that we want to do. Um, so I think that it's important to retain this. Um, and also, I think that climate change and fixing, or in addressing climate change is a collective problem. Um, I think that the CCA is a collective solution. It's taking, it's acting not, it's not asking individuals to sacrifice and do things on an, on an individual level, but it's working at the state level. I think that the city, by supporting the opposition to the 2117, is also ta, is just taking this up the next level down, right? So like, I think it's unclear what it means to vote on this, and I think that by making this resolution, the city can send a clear signal to voters and people in the community about what the right thing for them to do is, because honestly, people are busy and they don't have time to figure all these things out and parse the whole De Morgan's Law of like, yes, no, yes, no, on the thing. Um, so I support the city in opposing the measure, and thank you, and have a good night.
We received one request to speak remotely, Mr. Joe Kunsler. Hopefully, we can hear him better.
This is, this is Joe Kunsler. Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, you're a little quiet, but I think we can hear you all right. You have three minutes to address the council. Thank you.
No, thank you for this, uh, for your work and for any longer testimony. Joe Kunsler here, uh, transit advocate about to ride off in the sunset, but, uh, I'm grateful Council President Kurtz is helping me to fight back against a reckless, selfless act who wants to repeal the Climate Commitment Act in 2117. Um, this is a full scold of a tax cut that means vote less, get less, less public goods for Redmond, like your new fire engine, but also King County Metro, which should also be in the resolution. the resolution, just like when I-695 passed in 99, which ended with the worst state various structurally broken and transit hobbling along on sales tax increases, which are regressive and hit the pores more. It's not going to lower gas prices that much, and it's just, you know, war fools' gold. A quick Bing finds the King County Metro presumes almost $600 million in CCA funding over the next 14 years. The funding goes mostly to South King County, but also to Paratransit and DART, which is Dial Ride. Additionally, and very importantly, very progressively, very responsibly, CCA lets kids ride free on King County Metro, a decision that may have to be revisited by the agency as well as Sound Transit, which does not get, I repeat, does not get funding from the CCA for, to provide kids ride free if multi-zillionaire Brian Haywood and his buddy Alex Zimmerman buy a veto of the CCA, while working families pay the price. I wish this resolution would speak to the importance of letting kids ride free, although I don't, I am childless, and I'm 42. Allowing kids to ride free fixes what's broken with transit fares for working families, where for short to medium distance, the personal vehicle can be more economical. Transit is not a special interest. And in reply to multiple earlier public commentators, as a transit advocate about to write up in the sunset, I can assure you that my number-one job until the work is done is to hold transits accountable, as your mayor has found out serving on the Sound Transit Board so well. Also, President Kritzer is the leader of integrity. Transit works to heal the climate, and kids ride free is growing transit ridership by providing relief to working families from our user-fee-dependent state that I-695 helped amplify. User fees are inherently regressive on the same working families and fixed-income folks proponents supposedly care about. And the only way to recover the losses from the CCA may end up being more user fees and more transit fares on those people. Finally, I'm grateful this city council has the guts to return the favor of getting weapons to fight Zimmerman from Sound Transit fans like me by giving communities weapons to defend the Climate Commitment Act. But we need to actually use these weapons, and we need to tell the public, no on 22117, no to Zimmerman, the disability community, and Sound Transit 12s need one of those. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
And the public hearing is now closed. And before I go to the next, I just want to say thank you to our community, whether you supported or opposed the resolution. I appreciate all of the comments and the thoughtfulness that everyone came tonight to share their thoughts.
Having served on the city council for 12 years...
Mr. Myers, this is, you're out of order.
Counselor, is there a motion to approve AM number 24123, Resolution 1587?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Coats, could you assist us? Thank you. Resolution number 1587 has been moved by the, by council member, council president, and seconded by council member Stewart.
Is there any discussion?
Councilmember Stewart.
Great. Thank you so much. And I will echo the mayor's comments. Thank you so much to everyone for coming out tonight and participating in the conversation and allowing us to respond to community interest to hold this conversation. I also want to say, for my part, you know, I really hear those who are wondering, you know, why a council would weigh in on an issue like this, and I'll go ahead and explain why. I co-sponsored the resolution, which we've discussed in public session. There have been no closed sessions on this in order to bring this conversation forward. But for, but please know, this is a tool that the council has, and we don't use it lightly. So I don't expect that this council will weigh in on every single initiative that comes forward, but it is a tool that we have in very specific circumstances like this. So I appreciate that our community could have this conversation tonight. I heard, I co-sponsored the resolution on this because I think it's really important to keep the conversation, at least in this building, focused on the immediate impact to Redmond. And as has been a little bit less discussed tonight, the Climate Commitment Act funding has made immediate investments in Redmond, including $350,000 that are helping us plan for climate resiliency and climate mitigation in our once-in-a-generation climate, or comprehensive plan. If we don't have it in the plan, it's less likely to get achieved, so that's really important. Then the direct investments in families and in our infrastructure have also started. We have lots of middle and lower-income families that have now been able to transition to electric heat pumps using some of the subsidies that this has created. Additionally, Redmond families and families all across Washington State this summer from middle and lower-income households are eligible for a $200 reimbursement on their electric bill to help mitigate the impact of climate. Unfortunately, in this past legislative session, the legislature, when they appropriated about $1 million for Redmond, including for infrastructure in my neighborhood that would help address more multimodal infrastructure across the highway and in a particularly congested neighborhood, part of the neighborhood, the legislature said, we want to give you this $1 million, but it's contingent on the Climate Commitment Act staying together and surviving this initiative. So I really want to call to attention, I heard from Mr. Yoder tonight, that it was difficult to find the details of what the impacts were to Redmond. Those were attached in the memo, and I just want to make sure that the public is able to find those. Earlier this summer, I represented Redmond at the Association of Washington Cities Conference. All around the room for those, the rooms of that conference for three days, the tenor was, what if the Climate Commitment Act is repealed? What are we going to do? How are we going to fund the future that we are planning for and building for, for our cities? So for my part, that's why I was eager to see this conversation happen tonight, and I'm very grateful to have had a chance to hear from all of you tonight. Thank you.
Council President Kritzer?
Thank you, and I'll start by echoing both the mayor and council member Stewart, and thanking everyone for coming out and sharing your thoughts, both in support and opposition to this resolution. I introduced this resolution along with my colleagues, council member Stewart and council vice president Forsyth, because I believe that climate change is an urgent threat to our community. And as a mother of two children, as your council member, I feel that it's critical for me to be able to take action. And part of my time on council has been really focused on climate action. I've been proud of our council even since 2020, my first year on this council, when we passed our 30-year Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, and we declared a climate emergency here in this city. And we followed that climate emergency up with a zero-carbon strategy that outlined how we were going to get to net zero in our own city, and we set some pretty ambitious goals. The only way for us to do some of those things in terms of actually cutting down the greenhouse gases that are causing climate change is to have tools like this carbon pricing that happens through the Climate Commitment Act at the state level. We can't do it all at the city level. The Climate Commitment Act covers 75% of all greenhouse gas emissions in the state. So when you look at a wedge of all the different places where we can cut down on carbon emissions, this is the biggest tool that we have. And so as a city, if we say that we want to see action on climate, then we need to be able to support having this tool at the state level. This is also, if we wanted to look at this just from the perspective of our city, I think as council member Stewart said it really well, we could also just look at it from the fact that we have millions of dollars at stake for investments in the work that we're doing here in our city, both in terms of being able to transition our residents to be able to move towards a clean energy future, as well as do the planning for climate change and making sure that we can be more resilient. We also, though, if we wanted to look regionally, we also see that the Climate Commitment Act has generated investments into areas that I've spent a lot of time working with fellow leaders at cities around our, around our community to be able to invest in, such as salmon recovery. Last session, the legislature allocated $25 million to the Salmon Recovery Funding Board, again with the asterisk that that money will be taken away if this, if the Climate Commitment Act is repealed. So we literally have millions of dollars in salmon recovery that could be taken away, and even more that has already been invested. And when we talk about salmon recovery, we're not just talking about the salmon and the health of our waterways. We're talking about planning for floodplains and with the increasing risks of more frequent storms and more frequent events that are happening in our communities, and making sure that our communities can be resilient to that. We're talking about investments in tens of thousands of acres of forests, which provide for us the most specific natural climate solutions, trees which can capture carbon and help us to be able to address this threat. And we're also seeing that across our state, that by supporting the Climate Commitment Act, we can support investments in overburdened communities. By repealing the Climate Commitment Act, it would cut funding for vital programs that help to reduce costs for working people, including programs that support energy-efficient cooling and heating systems for families, tribes, and small businesses, and would also strip funding for programs that lower utility costs for low and middle-income households and seniors. So let's be real about where the effects are. And ultimately, let's focus on making sure that we're creating tools that will incentivize polluters to reduce their pollution, and in the meanwhile, generate revenue to be able to make sure that our communities can be more resilient, and we can take the actions we need to protect our planet for our community now and for future generations. Thank you.
Council member Fields.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also going to comment on the discussion tonight. I think it was one of the best public hearings that I've been able to participate and listen to since I've been on the council. I respect the research and the intelligence and the passion and the commitment of all the people who testified tonight. I really appreciate it. And those that provided arguments against our resolution, looking for more accountability, looking for more fairness, you're absolutely right. There should, governments owe you that. What was really, what really struck me tonight about this conversation is, I'm going to date myself a bit, as I often do. Back in 1977, I was able to convince the owners of a plumbing supply company to try and sell solar water heaters in Mississippi. The discussion then was, who is this crazy person from California talking about global warming? When I first went to the county in 2002, I rode a bicycle in, and I was pouring down rain, and I was freezing cold, and I happened to get on the elevator with Ron Sims, who was the county executive. He said, you look cold. And I said, yeah, I'm freezing my butt off to, so the planet won't warm overheat. And the discussion then was, you know, is it real? Nobody believed, I didn't hear any of that tonight. People who were opposed, people who were for it, all recognize a problem that 20 years ago, not a majority of people did. And it's been an emerging and very scary problem for me for many, many years. And even two years ago, council president Kritzer mentioned the climate emergency. And council member Anderson, I worked really hard to get that passed by the council. It took time, even on this city council who understands this. So yeah, tonight, I'm encouraged, for the first time in a really long time, by what the public understands and what the public knows. And we do have, we do have to do better. I am in support of this resolution because, as both council members who spoke ahead of me, they've outlined the details of what this program does. And I think it's really important that we don't go backwards. So I'm not going to add any more to what they have told you, but I will say that, for the first time in many years, this small discussion, and I hope it's being discussed all over the planet in this same way, is a very encouraging direction. So I'm in support of this resolution, and I'm certainly in support of the people who came and spoke tonight. So thank you.
I have, next, council member Anderson, and then council vice president Forsyth, and then council member Slahudin, and then council member Nueva Camina.
Thank you. I just wanted to note also, Mr. Fields, council member Forsyth also helped with the climate emergency declaration, so thank you for that. I did catch Mr. Myers' comments at the end of the microphone, and he is correct. I do have a potential conflict of benefit and conflict of interest with this resolution, so I will be recusing myself, but I would like to request that I stay to attend the rest of this conversation.
Please stay.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot has been said already that I don't need to repeat, but I definitely want to extend my appreciation and thanks to the community for coming out for this public hearing. I would agree with council member Fields that this was a very beneficial public hearing, getting to hear everyone's concerns, and we hear you as far as accountability. I too am in support of this. I was proud to co-sponsor this with council president Kritzer and council member Stewart, and as was stated, proud to bring forward the climate emergency declaration with council member Fields and council member Anderson. This is absolutely something that falls within not only my own values, but the values that I hear so frequently from the majority of our community. I did want to share that not only the $25 million for salmon recovery that council member Kritzer brought up, this also, the repeal of the Climate Commitment Act dollars also puts at risk the East Trail project, which has a lot of matching dollars from cities. So not only is it putting at risk the $25 million of funding for that project that ranges from South King County all the way up to North King County, it actually puts at risk the matching dollars that the city is putting forward, where the cities would then have to come up with that additional funding to complete all those projects. So this has very long-lasting implications, and I'm very proud to vote yes on this resolution, and I hope that this fall, you will join us in our commitment to making sure that we are continuing to mitigate the impacts of climate change.
Thank you. Councilor Slahudin?
Thank you. And I know it's late, and I appreciate everyone for staying and sharing all of your comments, echoing all of my fellow council members. And I know council president Kritzer, council member Stewart started off with all of the details, so I'm not going to repeat all of those. I am in support of this resolution, but definitely recognize a lot of what was said, you know, from those who are in support or are in opposition to the resolution, and understand, as council vice president Forsyth just mentioned, you know, accountability is necessary, talking to our residents is necessary, and hearing from everyone is necessary. And so we are really appreciative of, you know, all of the opportunity that you've taken to share your input. Very specifically, you know, on 2117 and why I am in opposition and support of the resolution, having a close connection with a lot of the youth in the community, a lot of the younger residents, specific to the youth transit initiative, where riders under the age of 18 can now ride transit for free specifically due to the Climate Commitment Act, and the opportunity that they have for better connectedness with regional partner, throughout the region cannot be underscored, and many, many students have, you know, expressed that they've now just been able to explore a lot more of home because of this. And so the opportunity, again, that you've taken here today to share your perspectives is really important and critical. And, you know, again, echoing council vice president Forsyth, it's really up to us and what we believe in as individual residents and taking it to the ballot. And, you know, I'll be voting no on 2117, but I really encourage everyone to really exercise your right to vote. So thank you.
Thank you. Council member Nueva Camina?
Thank you. I don't have, listening carefully to everything that my colleagues have shared, I don't have anything to say that would be in opposition of what has already been said. Speaking directly to what council member Fields had talked about is that, one, hearing what has been said, both for and opposing 2117, but also in the time that has passed, the one thing that I see that is very clearly is that, two things. Number one, it's not perfect. Our solution in the resolution to oppose 2117, it's not perfect, and I understand that, and I understand that there are concerns. And at the same time, we are most definitely experiencing climate change on a very rapid scale, so something has to be decided right now. And given that this is the largest tool that we have at the state level, that's why I'm supporting the resolution to oppose 2117, and I'll also be voting no on 2117 when it's on the ballot. Thank you so much for everybody who has come, so that we can truly listen to what your concerns are, listen to how in-depth you're researching this. concerns are, listen to how in-depth you're researching this, and that everyone is on the same page, that at least something has to be done. So thank you for coming and sharing tonight.
Are there any more comments this evening on this item?
Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Let me get to the right place. In support of the Resolution Number 1587 that opposes the initiative 2117. I'll start with Council President Kritzler.
Aye.
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 And Councilmember Anderson is recusing herself, and that passes six to zero. Thank you all very much. And thank you again to our community. I read an article in The Times, I think it was this morning, about how people have a hard time being in the same space when they conflict in their beliefs and their values and having discussions. And I do believe, not that I want to have these kinds of things on our agenda all the time, but I do really appreciate everyone bringing forward your very thoughtful ideas about whether or not to support or oppose this. So thank you all very much for bringing a great exposure to anyone listening, how wonderful the community of Redmond is in having a really robust discussion. Thank you all very much. Next is a staff report. Amanda Balzer, Public Works Policy and Planning Manager, will introduce the item for an informal briefing on Cascade Water Alliance 2025-26 Budget and Rates Proposal.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me the time this evening to provide you a staff report on the Cascade Water Alliance budget and rates. I am Amanda Balzer. I'm the Public Works Planning and Policy Manager, and I also am member staff for Cascade Water Alliance. So the purpose for this staff report tonight is informational briefing on Cascade Water Alliance 25 and 26 Proposed Budget and Rates. I'm going to do a brief overview of Cascade Water Alliance, speak to what Cascade member charges fund, Redmond share, and Cascade's proposed rate increases. And then I'll take questions at the end. So Cascade serves 400,000 people, over 400,000 people, and 20,000 businesses within its seven member agencies. Cascade is governed by a board of member agencies, elected officials, as you're aware. Mayor Bernie is our primary representative on Cascade Water Alliance, and Councilmember Nueva Camina is the alternate. The seven member agencies have joined to form a partnership to provide safe, clean, and reliable water supply to its customers now and into the future. It's Cascade's mission to secure long-term water supply, and in that mission, in 2009, Lake Taps was acquired. And Cascade continues to develop these regional partnerships and leverage regional surplus to delay the need to use Lake Taps. Members are currently served through water block contracts from Seattle Public Utilities. That current contract has supply starting to decline in 2039 and ends in the 2060s. Redmond purchases about 60% of its drinking water supply from Cascade Water Alliance, and the other 40% is provided from our five municipal supply wells. So this slide is an overview of what the member charges fund for Cascade Water Alliance. You can see a large portion of the funds go to water purchases for those water block contracts. There's also administration fees, conservation charges, debt services, and operations of Lake Taps. And coming up here in 2025, there's a portion that will go towards planning for the Tacoma Cascade Pipeline. You may recall earlier this year, Cascade presented, provided an informational briefing on the contract negotiations for water supply. Cascade Board gave direction in May of this year to work on a contract with Tacoma to ensure demands are met as the SPU water block starts to decline. Contract terms are actively being worked on, and tend to have kind of draft language towards the end of this year. So Cascade, to fund this work, and due to inflationary pressures, Cascade is proposing a 3.5% rate increase for 2025 and for 2026. So what does that mean for Redmond? So although Cascade is proposing a 3.5% rate increase, the resulting charges to Redmond will be more than a 3.5% increase over the 2024 cost. And that's really because of two factors. One is member charges are based on a three-year rolling average of demand. And this graph shows you the last seven years of Redmond demand, and you can see 2020 was a significantly low demand year, largely due to pandemic and reduction in commercial consumption over that time. So in 2025, we start to see that really low consumption year fall off the three-year rolling average. So we're sort of bouncing back from pandemic-low consumption uses in this next budget cycle for Cascade. The other factor is Redmond's water demands have increased more than other Redmond members during this time. So Redmond's proportional share of Cascade's costs have increased. So this shows you the Redmond payments in '24, '25, and '26. I'm going to kind of focus on the blocks on the right-hand side. So although Cascade is proposing a rate increase of 3.5% in '25 and '26, the Redmond Cascade charge looks like significantly more of an increase because of those two factors. Because of that three-year rolling average shift dropping off that lowest use pandemic year, and because of the demands for Redmond have increased faster than some of the other seven members, and so the proportional share of Redmond's costs have increased. So the blue box shows that Cascade, what it looks like because of those two factors. But due to... We see benefits from our independent supply wells. And we also have Redmond financial rate smoothing policies to kind of smooth these impacts. And so the finance's preliminary increase is calculated to be somewhere between 5% and 8% for '25 and '26 because of the benefit we get from our independent supply and those rate smoothing factors. So next up from Cascade, Cascade Board is planning to take these proposed rates, sorry, Cascade's planning to take these proposed rates to the Board at the end of September to adopt them. And then the other step that Cascade will be doing towards the end of this year is having draft language for the Tacoma supply contract. So with that, I will take your questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Balzer. Are there questions? Councilmember Anderson?
No questions, but I did want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve on the Cascade Water Alliance Board. It was one of the most enjoyable experiences so far in my term on council, so I do hope Councilmember Nueva Camina, you're enjoying your new role. And none of this is surprising, so if that brings in sort of that transition between council members and representation on the Board, this is the work that we did, sort of feeds into what we were working on a little bit last year. So thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, and then Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you, Amanda. Really appreciate the chances we've had to hear from you this year. And I just want to go back to Slide number five. This is the Cascade charges based on member demands. And I really, I don't have a question for you, Amanda. I just want to call this out for the public. The room is a little empty now, and shout out to the other members of your team who are also hanging on close to 9:30 here with us. Thanks for being here. We've had a lot of conversation about the future and preserving our future here in Redmond. My favorite fun fact about Cascade is that actually, on the Cascade's website, folks can order free aerators for their kitchen sinks. They can order low-flow showerheads and the like. So that's my favorite fun fact about Cascade, and I just wanted to take a small moment of privilege to make sure folks who tuned into this meeting, particularly for sustainability reasons, to make sure that they are aware of that and might consider helping us reduce demand and therefore rates in the future. Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Thank you. The slide after this, I had a question on. So in reading the report, it was a 3.5% change that was being asked for, but the Redmond shared, because the demands have changed, is going to be a 5% to 8% increase year-over-year? So in 2025 and in 2026, is that correct?
So the 5% to 8% increase also takes into account just our Redmond utility rate. So it's not just the Cascade portion that we pay to purchase that 60% from Cascade. So that's taking that all into consideration, and our financial policies, finance is looking at a preliminary rate increase of 5% to 8% for our water utility.
Okay. So the general public can anticipate a 5% to 8% increase in 2025 and again in 2026 for those doing their budgeting at home?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Thank you.
And I think that's a great point. You know, really, for the most part, people want to understand how it's going to impact their budgets. One of the things that we did do during the pandemic was we didn't raise rates at all. And so we knew at some point we were going to have to manage that later on, and so here's where we're seeing that. But that's a great question. Council President?
Thank you. On the topic of rates, is there going to be any support for people in our community who are lower income or need additional support as we see an increase in rates?
That's a great question. I'll look into that and get back to you.
Thank you.
We do have a program for people who qualify to assist them with their water bills and other utilities, so they would fall into that program.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. And it would be great, as we move into some of these rate increases, to just do an additional education campaign or get that out so that people are aware of that program. I thought there was, but I wasn't sure what the exact name of the program is, so it'd be great to be able to share that out. I know one of our best ways we've found from our community survey of people getting information is through their utility bills, and we put a little message in there, so.
So we...
Thank you.
Other comments or questions for this evening?
Well, thank you again. Thank you to your team, and appreciate all your work on this.
Great. Thank you.
Let's see. Our next item of business is a staff report for the Redmond 2050 Final Planning Commission Recommendations for Adoption in 2024. And I see, it says Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item, but I do know she is online. I think we might...
I am here.
There she is. And then I do see Jeff Churchill and others in the audience in person. So Director Helen?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, as part of the city's Redmond 2050 Work Planning and Community Development, staff are pleased to present the final Planning Commission recommendations for council consideration in 2024. This is a huge milestone in Redmond 2050, and staff are deeply appreciative of the Planning Commission's work over the last three years. And actually, I just want to note in acknowledgement of that milestone that the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair will both be joining the study session next week to share their observations about the Redmond 2050 process in general and about the topics specifically they reviewed this summer and that we're introducing tonight. So two Planning Commission reports and associated attachments and appendices are provided in your packet. Tonight, staff will summarize the key components of the Planning Commission's recommendation and seek council input on questions and topics to discuss during study sessions scheduled to begin next week on September 10. Tonight's focus is on two packages reviewed by the Planning Commission, the Summer 2024 Omnibus or Wrap-Up Package, and the Water System Plan and General Wastewater Plan Updates Package. You'll have noticed that the packet materials we distributed have a very high page count, up in the thousands, and this is for a couple of reasons. First, the Planning Commission reviewed the entire comprehensive plan as a whole. It was important to bring the entire plan as a whole because before that, it was reviewed in pieces. However, there are many hundreds of pages with no changes whatsoever. So all changes have been identified for your reference with comments that show the change and the rationale for making that change. And then second, the Water System Plan and Wastewater General Plan are lengthy technical planning documents, and the key ask of the Planning Commission was to ensure consistency between these plans and the rest of the comprehensive plan. I also wanted to highlight for you that we're scheduling a public hearing on October 1st to consider changes to the residential targeted area boundaries included in Redmond's Multifamily Project Property Tax Exemption Program, MFTE. And holding the hearing is required under state law and will require or will allow the council to consider changes to the MFTE program that will implement policy direction in the draft housing element and align the MFTE program with mandatory inclusionary zoning regulations that were part of Redmond 2050. I'm joined tonight by the staff that are in the council chambers with you, Jeff Churchill, Jeff Thompson, and Lisa Rigg, who will present the staff report and then take council questions or identify council questions for discussion beginning next week on September 10. And with that background, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Jeff Churchill.
Thank you, Director Helen. And since you can't see us, I'll just add that Ann Dettelbach and Peter Holt are also here. The Planning Commission and City Council have to date reviewed the Redmond Comprehensive Plan update in pieces. The main purpose of the Omnibus package is to bring all those pieces together so that the council, the commission, and the community can see the plan as a whole. With this package, staff aimed to improve consistency across the elements, reduce duplication where appropriate, correct errors that were identified throughout the review process, address requests that came up over the past couple of years, and generally just try to tie everything together. The graphic on the slide shows how the different, shows the different packages that have come to the City Council over the course of Redmond 2050 and how the Omnibus package fits into this overall. This slide and the next slides show the comprehensive plan components of the Omnibus package. Some of the content was new, and it's kind of highlighted on the slide, not new to the plan, but it was the first time that the Planning Commission had seen it when it came to them in the Omnibus package, and therefore, the first time you were seeing it as well. We revised the glossary to remove terms that are no longer in the plan and to add terms that are new to the plan. We also removed definitions that exist in the zoning code, so as not to create opportunities for inconsistencies. The introduction has also been updated and reviewed for the first time, and the goals, vision, and framework element, which acts as a summary of the comprehensive plan, has also been created. It is only new in the sense that the framework policies and the summary narrative have been pulled together into one place in the document. There are also element-specific revisions, including revisions responding to council requests over the past months. For example, the economic vitality element was updated to revise policy language around smart cities and to add a policy related to childcare. This city also received comments from the Snoqualmie Tribe concerning multiple elements, for example, on the topics of culturally modified trees and recreation, and so there are revisions proposed to reflect those comments. And this package also includes a six-year capital facilities plan for general government facilities, which had not yet come in any other package, and that is needed to fulfill Growth Management Act requirements for the capital facilities element. The next three slides identify Redmond zoning code amendments that were part of the Omnibus package. Much of this work was fine-tuning earlier work to ensure the code functions as intended when it's adopted. For example, there are some zoning overlays that are no longer needed. There are code references that need to be updated, and there are many tables of parking requirements that need to be deleted because they will be duplicative of a single parking table in the parking chapter. There are also a number of tweaks to the overlay regulations recommended by the Planning Commission as well. Notable among them is a provision exempting open space on a site plan from... Notable among them is a provision exempting open space on a site plan from the calculation of minimum gross floor area on a site. And I promise that is notable. Remember that the code asks applicants to show that they are planning to build to at least 70% of base allowed density, and if not, to show how that could be possible in the future. And the idea here is to ensure that Overlake is not underbuilt. Exempting open space in the calculation of the 70% number reduces the number of applicants that will need to complete the analysis and eliminates a disincentive to providing open space beyond what's required. Another change clarifies that the Build Two lines and setback requirements in the code only apply along a site's perimeter and not in the interior, so along public streets, where there may be also private streets in the interior. This was important to stakeholders with very large sites. And finally, in the package, the code has clarified to state that applicants cannot use development agreements that may be in process now but are not yet finished, and it won't be finished by the end of this year, to vest to 2024 regulations once 2024 is This package includes mandatory inclusionary zoning provisions for the new neighborhood zones. And for the neighborhood residential zone, this will most often be a fee in lieu of onsite performance. Open space and landscaping content from across the code has been consolidated into their respective chapters. There are a number of tweaks recommended to transportation-related regulations, including additional flexibility in parking, providing parking in residential zones and in providing onsite long-term bicycle parking. And so in summary, a large number of relatively small changes, and this evening have highlighted those that are in staff judgment noteworthy. And I will turn the presentation over to Jeff Thompson to describe the updates to the General Wastewater Plan.
Thank you, Jeff. My name is Jeff Thompson. I'm one of the water wastewater engineers here at the city. And we updated the Water System Plan for the 2050 Comp Plan Update. It's a major amendment to the 2021 wastewater, general wastewater plan. The environmental review was completed in December through the Redmond 2050 EIS. Technical Committee recommended it on May 29, 2024, and the Planning Commission recommendation on July 24. We reevaluated the 2021 plan to identify capacity needs in the sewer system to handle the Redmond 2050 growth, the biggest areas of interest toward the downtown area and the Overlake area. We also modeled middle housing impacts. We assumed that by 2050, up to 20% of the single-family parcels would take advantage of the middle housing, and we did not see any impact to the sewer system associated with that. We do need to do additional analysis in the downtown to address the sewer capacity caused by the increased density and the elevation of the King County trunk line. We plan on conducting these additional studies in '25 to '27. We've added language to the Redmond zoning code, 21.17.10, identifies the remaining growth allowed in the Redmond 2030 Comp Plan, requires development beyond this threshold to show that the project will not increase sewer surcharging and manholes. And a review of the remaining growth potential indicates that we will not exceed this threshold in the next two years. The language sunsets when analysis identifies a remedy to this capacity issues, and then we would update the wastewater plan accordingly. And now I'll turn it over to Lisa to go over this Water System Plan update.
Lisa Rigg, here to update you on the water system planning effort. So the plan is required by Washington Administrative Code to identify water system needs for the 10-year and 20-year growth horizons, and it's used to fulfill Growth Management Act requirements for the city's capital facilities planning. And it relies on modeling that's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The population growth numbers from the Redmond 2050 Preferred Alternative were used to inform the growth scenarios in the water system plan. And majority of pipe improvements that will be built to serve new development will be funded generally and built by development projects, while our capital focus will be on providing increased storage, upgrades to our wells and our treatment facilities, and replacement of some of the aging infrastructure so we can be more proactive in our support of future growth. And the capital projects are funded by the ratepayers. The next slide. So kind of a little bit what we've been working on this last year. We completed our draft in June of last year, did a pretty extensive outreach and public involvement process in July and August, brought it to Planning Commission for an introduction last August, and we just finalized our draft released in May of this year to address comments that we'd received, and that is included in your packets. Tech Committee gave a recommendation for approval on May 29, and Planning Commission recommended approval July 10, and their report is also included in the packets. So the plan includes identifying projects that we need to serve future growth in the city. And the modeling that was done indicates that there is a storage deficit that will occur by 2033. And it's notable that this showed up in the last Water System Plan also, and it'll need to be addressed to serve future growth. So right now, we're working with City of Kirkland and City of Bellevue on future capital projects that will help to provide additional storage to help meet that need. One outstanding issue we have, we're in discussions with Department of Ecology regarding a water rights question, and the issue at hand goes back to the early 2000s, and they were also noted in the previous Water System Plan. It has to do with the surface water right, and it doesn't directly impact any of our planned projects or the growth forecasts included in the plans.
Thanks.
So beyond the Omnibus package, the Water System Plan, and the General Wastewater Plan, there was some other information included in your packet. Staff included proposed amendments to two Redmond Municipal Code chapters. The Planning Commission does not review the Redmond Municipal Code, and so those did not go through Planning Commission review. The first is proposed amendments to RMC 338, the Multifamily Property Tax Exemption Program, as Director Helen said, to align the mandatory inclusionary zoning requirement that's in the zoning code with the MFTE tax incentives, and that makes those programs work together. And as Director Helen said, proposing changes to boundaries within which applicants can apply for MFTE to maximize the uptake of the program. A public hearing for that is scheduled on October 1. And second, staff is proposing amendments to RMC 310, which are impact fees. Those changes will implement impact fee exemptions requested by council and set new fees to fund the Recommended Transportation Facilities Plan reviewed in March. And so a note on those fees, in March, the council indicated support for adopting higher fees. It was $8,200 per person trip versus $6,200 per person trip as proposed. In addition to considering fees that are higher than $8,200 per person trip in future years, if data about the existing condition of the transportation system could be collected to support that. Staff has not completed the task of identifying and prioritizing additional projects that could be funded through the $8,200 per person trip fee. Even so, staff recommends adopting the Recommended TFP and associated impact fees while the work to identify additional projects or identify and prioritize the additional projects continues. Doing so will allow developers to get credit against fees for building projects that are not, that are in the Recommended TFP. And not doing so will also risk pausing development approvals for lack of concurrency since the existing TFP is nearly completely built out. Staff intends to return to the council in November to share a prioritization methodology as part of a Transportation Master Plan update, and then return again in 2025 with proposed revisions to the Transportation Facilities Plan based on that framework. And then the fees would be updated concurrently. And while that's a longer timeline than staff originally committed to the council in March, the near-term impacts of delay are minimal because the Transportation Facilities Plan is a long-range, financially constrained plan. There are also things that will be coming back to you that are not in your packet, and those are chapters of the Redmond zoning code and also the Redmond Municipal Code that you have previously reviewed, you have previously reviewed and on which there were, have been no changes since. Those will come back to you in your November packet for adoption, and we plan to preview that entire adoption packet with you at your committee of the whole meeting for Planning Public Works in November. You can see everything that's in it before you're asked to vote on it. So tonight, we would like to identify the discussion topics to prepare for study sessions beginning on September 10. You've already indicated interest in continued discussion on the future of the Design Review Board, on green building requirements, and also not on the slide, but also discussed the maximum size for detached single-family dwellings. So we'll be prepared to get to all those three at a minimum. And then in addition, the council asked to hear from Puget Sound Energy about PSE's transition to a clean grid. PSE will be here on September 17 to address the council. Then on October 1, we'll have the public hearing for the MFTE program. And finally, again, this is all in preparation for adoption of Redmond 2050 planned for November 19. And with that, we welcome questions and topics of interest for discussion beginning next week.
Thank you and the team so much. It's great, it's always great to see you, Mr. Churchill, but it's also great to see a lot of our public works staff who've been working behind the scenes on so much of that. So thanks for being here tonight, too. I am going to go down the line, and I see Councilmember Anderson's hands already up. So I'm going to start with her and for her comment, whatever, what she was going to say, and then also if she has any other questions for study sessions. So start with you.
Well, great job. Thank you for putting, preparing all this information. My colleague next to me is very excited as well. She said it's the final recommendations. That's great. I did have a question about the multifamily tax exemption. We, I believe, last year accepted a grant to look into the MFTE percentages, I believe, and I'm just curious if we could get an update on that next week? That would be really appreciated, and that's my only question that I'd like to add. Otherwise, great, great work. I'm looking forward to adopting the 2050 plan and the visionary part of it behind it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Noiva Kamina?
Thank you, Mayor. No questions, just comment and thanking folks for extending their day because it is quite late. So thank you, just wanted to make sure to acknowledge that. And also all of the heavy lifting that has been going into this and just working collaboratively on the whole project. Very excited for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Every time we go in this direction, I kind of am a buzzkill because I have a lot to say, so I apologize. First of all, I just want to thank the staff, the commissioners, the advisory committee members, and the public for all of the engagement and analysis that's gotten us to this point. Reading the comprehensive plan as a, as a complete document, literally my smile was hurting. Like, it's so exciting to be at this point. So I, I'm so excited. I, I'm going to actually reserve like my questions on, on the Comp Plan itself because I really dug this week. We kind of had to pick and choose given the thousands of pages, but, so I really dug in on the water systems pieces for this next study session, and I have a few kind of substantive questions to ask about that. So I do think it's worth reviewing the recommendations from the Planning Commission, in particular those five that they called out. And just in case the council missed it, there are actually two letters from three council members that are included in Attachment C, Appendix E. So I knew they were there, I couldn't find them. Staff helped me find them today. So it'll be great that we're going to have Planning Commissioners with us next week to review that. And actually, I would invite, and I'm excited that we'll have both Mayor Bernie and Councilmember Noiva Kamina at that conversation, or as we always do, but I, it would be really helpful to hear if either of you have any concerns at all about the water supply plan being completed on time, I think, is the thing that needs to be, to help put folks' minds at ease. So I'm looking forward to that conversation. And I think Mr. Thompson referenced this a little bit in his comments tonight, but I'm a little bit unclear because, for instance, in Attachment C, starting around Section 2.3.2, City of Redmond Comprehensive Plan, it looks to me like this plan is referring to our current comprehensive plan, and we even see the maps that are soon to be outdated with, with our zoning, especially in neighborhoods like Overlake. So I'd just like to understand a little bit better what this plan is harkening back to or, or what that process might look like when we adopt it again and then need to align it with the current, the, what will now be current comprehensive plan. So I'm just a little bit lost on that and would appreciate a check-in. And I want to double-click on the support for storage, especially in Overlake. In fact, I'd like, I'd like to have a conversation at the study session on this and really understand. The, the deficit is really put into perspective when it comes to Overlake, and, you know, we have this unit of measure in the comprehensive plan. Downtown, for instance, is going to have an activity units of, you know, 45 units per acre. Overlake Village and Overlake is going to have 85. It is a very dense place that we are going to be building out, and in the, in the case of an emergency, we're not going to have the water. So I really appreciate the staff tonight, Lisa especially, your comments that this was noted in the last Water System Plan. And really, I guess my question on the table is, what could we, what does, what do we need from this body now and in this plan now to make sure that we are actually getting to this really important storage need in, in Overlake and hopefully ahead of the growth that's coming to that neighborhood so exponentially? So I would love to study that a little bit more. I'd also like us to spend some time on the reclaimed water conversation. So I saw a little bit of the Planning Commission's questions there. I, I think it would be helpful to see actually the MOU that we have with Cascade on this. And, and the phrase that worries me the most is, is again similar to the Overlake storage concern. On page 163 of Attachment C, we have this phrase, "at this time." So we know that this doesn't work at this time, but we, we are thinking ahead and planning for the future. So I'd like to understand that a little bit more. What would need to change in order for the city to be able to explore the use of reclaimed water outside of the CARAs, the Critical Aqua Recharge Areas, of course? And what does this body need to do in order to really push ourselves to make sure that the future folks who sit in these seats are well-prepared to, to identify and take on the question as is needed? So those are, those are my big questions for the water, and I'm still working on the Comp Plan. Thanks.
Councilmember Slahadine?
Thank you. I will just say, again, expressing my appreciation for all of the work that you've put in. Thank you so much. And I'm particularly excited about the presentations that we have coming up specific to Puget Sound Energy and looking at, you know, the holistic scope of what our energy grid will look like with regard to all of the development and changes that we'll have coming in 2050, as well as the, the public hearing on multifamily property tax exemption next week. If we could focus as well a little bit more on the amendments to RMC 3.10, or maybe even talking outside in a, in a meeting, would love to explore a little bit more on the fee exemptions for affordable housing and daycares and just talk through that a little bit more. Thank you.
Thanks. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Thanks for this huge lift to everyone. This is going to be really exciting when we finally wrap this up. I think this has consumed my entire time on council as well as your entire lives for the past many years, so just expressing gratitude for that. I had a lot of questions, so I have drafted them in an email, and I will be shooting off to you momentarily. Just briefly, though, since Councilmember Fields is going after me, one of my questions pertains to, he has asked several times around the incentive impacts and the implications of those incentives. So I'd really love to see us further that conversation in addition to all the things that you've already identified that in, in the PowerPoint presentation tonight. But I wanted to call that one out so he could further clarify any issues around those, those incentives.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Appreciate the setup. I think the question's been asked a number of times on incentives. The question was incentives versus requirements and, and why do we, you know, where, where are those, where are those public needs where we actually need to make choices? are those, where are those public needs, where we actually need to make choices and say, you don't have, you don't get a choice in this, you don't get an incentive, and where incentives are a constructive thing to use? I, I don't want to re-ask that question. I, I think Director Helen has heard me ask that two or three times. I'm still waiting for clarification. And if you do want to talk offline, happy to do that. What I would like to see is a risk mitigation plan. You, Councilmember Stewart, was describing risks and concerns. This is a really complex thing to do. I understand the, the work and the thought and the agony that you've all gone through in trying, you know, the timeline of X many years and the complexity of infrastructure investment. And also, we have, as we talked about earlier, a rapidly changing environment, which will impact all of your infrastructure plans. So, to the extent on wastewater and water supply and other infrastructure needs, if you could highlight for this council some of the key risks, things that might happen, and how you, how we as a government and a community and a city would respond and mitigate if those things do manifest, I think that would be a really positive and helpful thing for the decision-making.
Great. Thank you. Council President?
Thank you very much for all the work on this, and, and huge thanks to our planning commission for all the efforts and, and time spent on this. As my colleagues referenced, this is a lot of material for us to, to dig into and, and imagine a lot of work to put all that together. Quite a few of my questions were, were asked previously, but a couple more I'll throw in for the conversation. One is, I'm interested in, in the sewer study that is to come. I noticed on the areas that we're going to be focused on, Rose Hill wasn't mentioned as one, but it's one that we hear a lot about, just in terms of like septic and, and kind of connecting to sewer needs. And just curious to know a little bit more about the targeting for some of the study and the planning for that, and how we think about especially areas that are still needing to modernize from septic to sewer. So, would love to, to hear a little bit more about that as, as we're looking at some of this planning, since it's something that we hear about a lot. I was also trying to dig through and understand, because I saw the planning commission had a discussion about something we sent back to them on Smart City, and I, and I couldn't find exactly where the edit landed. So, if possible, just in the matrix, if you could call out for us where we can see the, the recommended change after their discussion, that would be really helpful. A couple of these other ones were covered by others. I would, I would throw out a, a plus one on the, since we did hear, have an additional report from some individuals on the planning commission, and I think it was on page 2,811 of that document. It might be helpful to just have those ones pulled out into their own separate document for us to, to have as an attachment to review for, for the upcoming time. And I would be interested to know a little bit more about how we look at, at some of those recommendations or, or think about them. Perhaps we'll be able to hear from the planning commissioners themselves about that conversation as well. And then, lastly, just want to note, because I think there's a lot more to cover here. As we think about the process going forward, I, I guess I wanted to ask, when would be the deadline in which council members can submit questions for the upcoming study session to get into the matrix or be considered? Because I think there's a lot, and I believe maybe it'd be good for council members to have a little bit of time if they want to submit any additional questions.
Sure. I think we have plenty to go on for the 10th. And so, maybe we don't, we don't, we probably don't need more topics for the 10th, but we have another study session on the 24th, and that's a Tuesday. So, maybe the beginning of the prior week, which is the 16th, I think, Monday, the 16th, that'd be a great, that'd be a good deadline for getting anything in for that next one.
Great. Yeah. And I think at that next one, because it seems like we may focus on the many topics noted tonight, I'll be very interested to dig in, and I'll probably send a few questions on how it's all come together in the omnibus package, especially kind of the initial visions that, that have been laid out and some of the even introduction that, that we're seeing there, some of the revised texts there. So, just to preview, not a specific question, but, but we'll bring that up. And I think maybe we'll be able to dig into that at that time. Thanks.
And as Council President described, if there was something you missed tonight, please send them an email. And you don't actually have to wait till the 16th. You could do it sooner than that, too. So, though, we'll have it all ready for you by the time we get to the second study session as well. But thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Really exciting. We're getting there. We're almost there. It's almost, it's going to happen. So, and thank you all for your great questions. Appreciate it. Looking forward to the conversation next week. Thank you. Our next item of business is Ombuds Report. Then we have committee reports, and we do have an executive session tonight, and then, then we are done. So, Ombuds Report, I'm going to have, ask Councilmember Slahudin if he wants to finish up August, and then Councilmember Anderson has September.
Thank you. I think I have over three weeks of August, so I'll try to go quick and as comprehensive as possible. I want to start with recognizing National Night Out on August 6th. I joined Mayor Bernie, Council Vice President Forsyth as well, and want to give a special shout-out to the three neighborhoods that did host me, West Meadow Park, Hartman Heights, and 161st Court Northeast, where we had a lot of extensive conversations around Plymouth Housing Project, community engagement opportunities from the city council, to which I shared our upcoming conversations with council opportunities, Redmond 2050, public safety initiatives as Chair of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, as well as parks and pickleball and cricket. We also received a question about the shooting range gunfire noise question in the Willow Rose Hill neighborhood, which has come up in the past as well, this time from a new constituent. We, I had further conversations with a resident about the public access defibrillators, which was brought up earlier in a, items from the audience. Received an inquiry from the South Asian Heart Foundation about participation in potential Diwali events. Received a comment from a constituent thanking us for the rumble strips put on West Lake Samamish and the south end of the separated bike path, along West Lake Samamish, and separately, the south end of the bike path from Marymore to 51st Street being affected by tree roots. So, pass that along. Received an email from Pearl from Amazon's Public Policy Team, sharing that enrollment is open for the satellite technician certificate program at Lake Washington Institute of Technology. So, if anyone's interested in the exciting space manufacturing career path, there are scholarships up to $2,000 for, for potential students to join. A resident reached out about concerns with the Redmond Senior and Community Centers, specifically around the walking track usage for seniors and the automatic door openers. We received an email about mural artwork on buildings across Redmond and how we can better sort of beautify the city with art. A resident reached out to raise a concern about an unpaved road in the Rose Hill neighborhood and the potential dangers they face in the short, unpaved road area. Received a lot of inquiries specific to the hashtag cannabis burglary. I personally also spoke with Logan Bowers of hashtag, and he has also reached out multiple times to the city and the council, and will be continuing those conversations. I know that there was a conversation that Council Vice President Forsyth had that she might comment on as well. Met with the organization Eastside Pathways to learn about the work that they're doing in uplifting and empowering youth in the community, and listened to several different youth groups actually give presentations on different topics specific to, you know, how factors such as socioeconomic status or, you know, upbringing, whether it's in the east side versus Seattle, are impacting youth in our community. I had a Port of Seattle tour of the working waterfront and learned just how much of the port imports and exports from our waterfront, and all of those cargo ships are actually, you know, a lot is going on. So, we'll be happy to, to talk to anyone about that as well. And finally, I had the opportunity to tour the SpaceX and Starlink facility, which is an unincorporated Redmond, but used to be in the city. And they talked to me about all of the work they're doing to connect our communities, especially significant in the fact that Redmond-based companies produce almost half of the satellites in Earth's orbit, if not more now, and are projected to manufacture more than 75% of the world's satellites in the near future.
Great. Thank you. And just for the public, we had a meeting with the hashtag owners a week, week or so ago, and have come up with strategies for some solutions. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. Happy Labor Day weekend, everybody. And to the council email, we had four emails, one on school expansion, a question regarding added housing for, when we add housing to Redmond, if we will also be working to expanding schools, and expanding schools. I have not responded yet, but I'm just letting you know what I've seen. We had one submission of testimony for the item on 2117 that we discussed earlier this evening, some questions regarding the site plan entitlement that were responded to by the office of the mayor and, as well as staff. So, thank you for staff, thank you staff on the Plymouth Housing Project. And then, another one, commenting on biking and trails within the city as the bicycle capital of the world, as well as bollard permitting options. I assume that's related to the hashtag event as well. I also had a conversation with a resident that recently moved in about economic instability in the city, and they remarked, "Our policies are quite unfair if justice is benefiting others in power because housing developers have coercive control of our private data and sky-high rent rates are pushing people out legally, occupying generous yards and properties without protecting the first residents there." And then, I also received two physical letters. One was a very anxious letter from a resident warning me that the psychopath tribunals are coming and providing great detail about the risks of them. Another was addressed to the justices of the Supreme Court, so it may have been a mis, mislabel, but included a photo of me and asked if I had ever been bribed in my role, and the answer is no. So, thank you. I'm happy to share those with the council.
That's curious. Councilmember, sorry, Council Vice President Forsyth, and then Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. We may have been on recess, but I feel like I've had more meetings in the past two weeks than I have in a long time. So, we've been very busy still, even though we were on recess. So, during the National Night Out conversations, I had conversations with residents concerning affordable housing and how to maintain affordable housing, lots of conversations around Plymouth Housing Project and fire safety. One community member in the grass lawn area remarking on how they were, they were excited for council members and city staff to show up so they could complain about the street paving, and then the signs went out that they were paving that street the very next week. So, it got to take some gratitude instead of some angst, which I then shared with the Public Works Director, and I know that paving is now done, so that's fantastic. Heard some concerns about tree code and our ESAP and how our tree canopy is still being reduced. Heard some concerns at a different neighborhood party about racing down 124th and passed that concern on to Captain Coats, sorry, Deputy Chief Coats, my apologies. And also, some concerns about a business operating out of a home in that same neighborhood, which has been passed on to city staff to look into. Some concerns about a stop sign at 148th and 80th, which has now been activated as a new traffic pattern in that area. So, be careful if you are in that area. I love that the Public Works crew has put out additional signage and barrels to make sure that people do not miss that stop sign. And so far, in my experience, everyone is complying and everyone is noticing it. So, thanks for that extra work. Lots of conversations around crisis response and alternative crisis response, and what our city is doing to ensure we are working for mental health capacity. Conversations around some homeowners association issues. I had a long conversation with the community member who spoke tonight about the houses being built on either side of Hur and the health impacts, noise impacts, the, the square footage of those homes being about five times of what the neighborhood homes are in that area. And I saw Director Burt had a conversation with her, so I will hope to follow up with her and hope that she gets some solutions for that. Had an email concern around a school crosswalk at 160th and 106th in the Meadows Park area. And lastly, I wanted to say thank you to the owners of hashtag and the city for coming together and having a conversation about some temporary solutions and some longer-term solutions that we are all actively working towards, making sure that our community feels safe and that the city priorities are addressed while still being able to ensure that public safety is addressed and the transportation in that area is kept to the highest standards. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Councilmember Slahudin mentioned this. I'll just say it one more time, for the good of the public, we are holding conversations with council September 30th in Downtown Park from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. As a chance for just the community to come out and, and talk, we'd love to hear what's on your mind. So, please join us in the park. I want to quickly thank the organizers of the Move Redmond Open Streets Festival and Redmond Pride. Both were just really wonderful events in, that took place during our recess. I spoke with the Redmond Elementary School Sustainability Chair regarding the color coding of our recycling and garbage bins. That was actually at one of said festivals. It was a really great connection. And I met with Amy Tsai, our Policy Director in the Association of Washington Cities, one of their policy analysts, to better understand the proposed retail delivery fee proposal for the upcoming legislative session. For anyone who's interested in a quick primer on this, again, this is being considered as a revenue source to, to bring revenue back, back to cities, which the gas tax and road usage charge may not, may not be able to do. AWC has a city-voiced podcast, is a short listen, maybe 12, 15 minutes or something like that, if anyone would like to tune in. Visited with the neighbor who spoke tonight on Rose Hill, who is experiencing redevelopment in their neighborhood. Actually, went to this neighborhood. It was a neighborhood that I've previously been assigned to during National Night Out and have, have developed a friendship with a couple of the neighbors. Also discussed what's going on there, worked with staff in planning and otherwise. And I do encourage the, the neighbors to continue engaging in conversation with their new neighbor who, who is going to be building in their neighborhood. I connected a small business owner in Redmond to one Redmond in order to, to explore B2B opportunities and met with emergency staff per their request to the whole council. Really great conversations, so hopefully, everyone's getting a chance to have those conversations. And then, I met with Director Burt today to discuss questions that members of the public have brought to me regarding composting, both in residential and detached neighborhoods and in multifamily developments. And a few of these suggestions were also in the outreach from Paul Quinn in his items from the audience today. So, I am following up on a couple of those. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Council President?
I will not cover all the great things that my fellow councilmembers did, since I think we talked to some of the same people and also went to some of the same events. But, well, we'll note, it was great to join on the working waterfront tour. Really learned some really interesting things about the port. Also enjoyed going to Rockin' on the River. I saw Councilmember Nueva Camina there. And just want to do a huge shout-out to our senior program staff for putting that on. It was amazing to see hundreds of our residents out enjoying and especially being, using our new senior community center as the, the base for that. It was really fun. Also, met with, with a group that is interested in, in the city advancing a greener-by-default policy around catering for city events, so using more sustainable food for, for city events. And, and I'm going to look into a little more on that, but it was very interesting and maybe something you'll see in the future. And also talked with quite a few residents about climate change and, and some of their concerns. Met with some similar residents to, to others with concerns about development. And then, also discussed with a couple residents around public safety and alternative crisis response. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other items? Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. So, I've heard a number of times, many times, probably 10 this year, from baseball teams that say our Hartman Park baseball field lights are not adequate directionally. They create blind spots, they create glares in comparison to other baseball fields in the area of that same level. The lights are much nicer and better. So, I, I don't know if somebody from parks wants to talk specifics, find the right coaches or the right players, but I've heard it many times over the past couple of years, and it seems to be a very agreed-to issue that we need to look at. it seems to be a very agreed-to issue that we need to look at directional settings of our lights. And then, would also just take, on a personal note, over the years, a lot of people have used an opportunity to talk with me on city issues at my wife and I's coffee shop. We have sold that coffee shop as of Sunday. I'm encouraging anybody to continue to contact me, happy to go have coffee, happy to meet with people and talk about the city of Redmond, so thank you.
Well, that's big news, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other ombuds items tonight? Any committee reports? It's quiet August. Council President.
I did some prep for committees, but I won't cover those. I will say that we did have a meeting of our Public Safety Funding Subcommittee, and I think made some good progress on that. We're currently scheduled to have a study session next week. We're going to be meeting this week to assess if we're kind of ready for that, or whether we'll push to the next study session, so just wanted to give everyone the update. But I think we've had some good discussions and come up, the staff has come up with some creative solutions to solve for our public safety funding gap that I think we'll be excited to bring in at a study session soon to the whole council.
Great, thank you. And I did have a, I'm Vice Chair of the Regional Policy Committee, and we did have a meeting this morning, and there are two items that are probably of interest. One is the inter-local agreement between Seattle-King County, the Sound Cities, well, with the Sound Cities Association is being revisited for the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, working to solidify down to one board now that it's been up and running for five years, so more to come on that. And then, we're also working on the implementation plan for the Doors Open, which was the cultural access money that King County is allocating regionally. And so if you have community, if there are community members or entities out in the Redmond area and are interested in having some input on the implementation plan, I would love to hear from you, because it helps me in helping to ensure that the monies that are coming through King County are going out to our local cultural entities throughout Redmond and the region, so would love to hear from people. So those two things happened this morning. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, there is no unfinished business, there is no new business. There is an executive session to discuss potential litigation, RCW 4230-110-1I. For 20 minutes, action will not be taken following the executive session, and the meeting will adjourn. I'm going to give us a couple of minutes to get over there. Our meeting will adjourn at, oh goodness, let's say, let's give us, someone do the math for me. Let's say 10:40. We will not need to extend the meeting, hopefully.
Okay. Can't we go, I thought we couldn't go past 10:30?
Can't take action past 10:30. Yeah, thank you for a reminder. But we will adjourn at the time, we will not be coming back into this room, we will be adjourning from that meeting. Thank you.